Good evening, everybody. My name is Steve Linell. I'm the vice chair of the City of Nashville zoning board and City of Nashville zoning board of adjustment. And this is the November 12th, 2024 zoning board meeting. I'm filling in for Rob Shaw, who's the chair, who cannot be with us tonight. The chair is in control of the meeting. To the extent practical and advisable, the board will follow the procedures as identified in its bylaws. The applicant will present their case for 15 minutes, followed by questions by the board. Next, persons wishing to speak in favor or with questions or opposition will be asked to speak for up to five minutes each. If there are questions or opposition, the applicant will have five minutes to present a response. Finally, one and only one person with questions or in opposition will be permitted to speak again before the board deliberates and determines an outcome. The chair will notify speakers as time is expiring. Tonight, we will be hearing requests for deviation from the Nashville zoning code in the form of applications for variances. A variance is a request that seeks permission to do something that the city ordinance does not permit. Variances have five points of law to be met that are outlined in board motions. Per the City of Nashville bylaws and State of New Hampshire revised statutes, a minimum of three or more affirmative votes are required to approve any motion. This board will hear all scheduled cases if a quorum of three voting board members is present at this meeting, and we do have a quorum tonight. And we have, we have full board tonight. Any citizen has the right to contest the decision that this board makes. Should we make a decision that you believe is an error, you have the right to request a rehearing. A written rehearing request must be received by the City of Nashville Planning Department within 30 calendar days from the date of the decision. Should this board not grant a rehearing request, you may file an appeal directly to the New Hampshire Superior Court. Please contact Mr. Falcone, the Planning Department, for more information. So for this meeting, we have the following full board members in attendance. We have myself, Steve Linell. I'm the vice chair. To my right, we have Mr. J.P. Boucher, who serves as our clerk. We have Mr. Josh Neely, and we have, let's see, Jay is not with us tonight. And we have the following alternate members in attendance. We have Estacia Boras, Mr. Andrew Sylvia, and Mr. Joseph Patry. So since we have six members here who can vote, what I'm going to do is for each case, we have five members that can vote. So I will be selecting one of the alternates to vote, two of the alternates to be voting on each case. And I'll be rotating through the, through the alternates. In addition to the board members, we also have with us Mr. Carter Falk as the deputy planning manager. So I will now take roll call of attendants. J.P. Boucher.
Present.
Josh Neely.
Present.
Estacia Boras.
Present.
Andrew Sylvia.
Present.
Joseph Patry.
Present.
And again, Steve Linell is present. Alternates may fully participate in discussion but will vote only if, if a full board member refuses themselves or if there are fewer than five full board members in attendance, which there are tonight. Mr. Falk, are there any changes to the agenda?
Other or not.
Thank you. I will now read the first case into the record. Owner is Crimson Properties LLC, 75 Deerwood Drive. Address is, for the application, is 111 Concord Street, Sheet 48, Lot 47. Requesting variance from Land Use Code Section 190-16, Table 16-3, to exceed maximum number of stories, two and a half permitted, three proposed, for two duplex units. The duplexes were approved by the ZBA on February 27th, 2024. This is in the RA Zone Ward Three. Is there somebody here to present the case? Whoever would like to speak, step up to the lectern, give your name and address, and walk us through your case, please.
All righty. My name is Peter Dollf. Company me tonight is Stephen Value. We represent Sequel Development and Management, Inc. And I want to thank the board for hearing our variance request tonight. We appreciate it very much. We are a Nashville-based real estate development and property management company. Some of our most recent projects in Nashua include Gaskell Drive condominiums, 18 units, 71 Deerwood Drive condominium, 14 units, 7 Deerwood Drive condominium, seven units, 75 Deerwood Drive condominium, 16 units, and then 1820 Domain Ave, a 10-unit condominium development. I, I list those off because our primarily, our, our wheelhouse is the development of what they call infill housing. So we buy antiquated homes in Nashua, merge a couple lots together, and primarily build townhomes. That's, that's always been kind of our specialty, which is, in essence, today's stater home. We also usually manage those associations for a number of years afterwards. So we get quite a bit of feedback from the owners, as you can well imagine. And our, our properties have been very well received. The owners are usually very happy once they move in. The city, the city staff seems to receive our homes very well. So I just mentioned we are used to dealing with small lots and small tight areas, having done so much infill housing. We purchased the lots at 111 and 113 Concord Street from Crimson Properties. Our intention is to build exactly what had been approved at the February 28th, 2024 zoning meeting. We asked our architect, Amy Osberg, from New Hampshire Design Collaborative, to design a two-and-a-half-story duplex utilizing the exact same footprint as shown on the Hayner Swanson plan that was approved in February of 2024. We applied to the building department for a building permit, thinking we had met all the necessary criteria. The building department felt otherwise. It was, they felt that we had designed a three-story building and sent us back to zoning. After discussion, we discovered a difference in definition of two-and-a-half story. To be very clear, we are not trying to expand on the permitted use of this property. We were trying to build a two-and-a-half-story building, as was granted. We are using the exact same site plan that was approved by Hayner Swanson on February of 2024. We are using the exact same foundation footprint size in the exact same location as approved. In our height, as per the local zoning regulation, is, is less than 35 feet. It is 34 feet, six inches. The full dormers on the front and back allow more usable square footage in the third floor. This is a benefit to the homeowner, increases the value of the home. So I'd like to address the five questions that are always addressed in the variance request. The requested variance is very minor in nature. It is essentially a difference of definition of an accepted use. It provides more square footage of usable space to the homeowner. The general public will only see a slightly different roof line. It does not in any way affect the character of the neighborhood. It does not affect the public health, safety, or welfare, or otherwise injure public rights. The proposed use does not, does honor the spirit of the ordinance. Quite honestly, utilizing a more liberal interpretation of the ordinance, it meets the ordinance. Otherwise, it does not alter the essential character of the neighborhood, threaten public health, safety, or welfare, or otherwise injure public rights. The property owner would benefit by having more usable square footage in their home. This is accomplished, increasing the foot, this is accomplished without increasing the footprint of the building or the maximum height, thus allowing more green space and landscaped areas on the property. Item number four, the structures on Concord Street south of the subject property were largely built in the late 1800s and early 1900s. At that time, Concord Street was the home of Nashua's elite wealthy families. The homes are very large and grand homes, depicting the wealth of the period. The homes north of the subject property were largely built in the post-World War II building era and then on into the early, in early 1980s. They tend to be more typical of modern construction, including tapes, gambrels, ranches, and other standard designs. Allowing us to build a home that achieves more square footage will allow us to be closer in size and value to the homes south of the subject property. We would also likely add value to the homes north of the subject property. In general, we would support or enhance the current values in the north-end neighborhood. And finally, item number five, literal enforcement of the, literal enforcement of the ordinance greatly reduces the usable square footage of the home. It creates unnecessary hardship and diminishes the value of the properties. The properties to the south is bordered by Greeley Park. Further south is the large and grand homes of the early 1990s, 1900s. This is arguably the most historic and largely most valuable part of Nashua. It is a special neighborhood in the city. Our proposed buildings are still much smaller than the properties to the south. The extra square footage allows us to build homes that are closer in value to the homes south of the property. They are, however, then, they, however, then present a great bridge, reducing the size from the south to the homes to the north. They will very much in character match the new townhomes bordering the properties to our immediate north. I'd also like to take one moment and just address the letter that we received today from Mr. and Mrs. Eric Frobes. I apologize if I'm pronouncing that wrong. They live at 109 Concord Street. Common definition of two-and-a-half-story home was provided by New Hampshire Design Collaborative, not by Hayner Swanson, Inc. It is, it is a definition that Amy used when she designed the homes. The size and location of the foundations have not changed. They're exactly what this board approved in February of 24. They're exactly in the same location as approved in February of 2024. Our buildings are always built with rain gutters and infiltration basins. All, all water that's generated from the roof and all water that's generated from the driveway will be captured on site and will be perked into the ground on site. There will be no runoff downhill. We always exceed the city landscape codes. We will do the same with this project. We will work with the Frobes and develop some plantings and some buffers that will help enhance their property and, and help enhance our property so that we can sell them. But we will come up with a buffer that makes sense. We have installed silt fencing. However, it has deteriorated very quickly. We will fix it, and we will correct any silt or runoff that has happened, and we apologize if that happened to your property. The last thing I would address, our company has not contacted Mr. and Mrs. Frobes yet. We just met this evening. I am not familiar with the plans they referenced in their letter. My, my assumption is they were plans that Crimson Properties must have presented at some time. In closing, we believe bringing four new housing units to Nashua benefits the community. As we all know, there's a, there's a national and a local housing shortage. We will build these homes in the same professional manner as we have built the previous 65 homes over the last seven or eight years. We will believe they will be very attractive, and they will be an enhancement to the neighborhood. Thank you very much for listening.
Before we continue, I wish to mention that Mr. Patry and Ms. Boras will be voting on this case. Any questions by the board? I guess I do. So if, to summarize, it, it sounds like the difference between what this board saw back in, in February and the plan today is that instead of the partial dormers, to, there are, is basically made into a full dormer, so a full three-story building. Is that correct?
Yeah, we, I, I know it's probably going to be hard for you to see. We put the drawing up and...
I saw the drawings in your packet.
Yeah, it's in the packet. And so that, that third floor wall is just taller.
Yeah, yeah, speak into the microphone, please.
I'm sorry. The, um, the third floor wall is a full dormer, so it comes up further off the height, the top of the second floor wall. I know, and when you get into definitions of two-and-a-half story, it has to do with the placement of the wall on, on the third floor, whether it's directly above the wall on the second floor, or if it is above the flooring and in a little bit. So I mean, it will, by architectural definitions, it is definitely a two-and-a-half story building. Nashua prefers to see that roof line kept two to three feet off the roof below.
Yeah, because I did my own web searching of, of what a half-story definition is. I, I found a page called Law Insider that doesn't agree with you, or agrees with what the city has. The first definition, the portion, half-story means a portion of a building immediately under a sloping roof, which has a point of intersection of the top line of the rafters and face of the walls not to exceed three feet above the top floor. And then some other references, that was seven ordinances, city ordinances found. And there's another one that says two, two, two feet. But...
I'm not disputing that there's, there appears to be. I, I found several different definitions of two-and-a-half story as well. And I, our, our architect, Ms. Osberg, sent us the definition she was going from. So I think that's where the dis, you know, we thought we had a two-and-a-half story building that met the criteria, and that's where the disconnect was. I don't dispute there are a number of different definitions.
The city RSA has a specific definition. The other comment I made is, is you keep referring to houses to the south, but there's a rather large separation by the means of Greeley Park between the property in discussion and those grand houses to the south. Is that correct?
Well, you do have the park between our property and the, and the large homes to the south. There is a separation by the park, yes. But, I mean, it's largely, it's, it's all the north end of Nashua, and most people kind of, those grand homes flow into the park, and it's all...
It's my, my general neighborhood, so I'm very familiar with it. I walk it almost every day. Okay, that's, that's really the only questions I had. Any questions, further questions from the board? Okay. You may keep. Is there anybody in the audience who wishes to speak in favor of this application? We do have letters of, with questions, concerns, or comments, and I, I do see that Mr. Frobes, who's apparently here in the audience, has a letter. We have one from, let's see, it's the one I have. So at this point, I will ask if there's anybody with questions, concerns, or comments, if the Frobeses would like to come up and, and give their, their talk. Otherwise, their letter will be read, included in the minutes of the, of meeting. All of the board members have seen it. It's your choice, sir. Please give your name and address and...
Yes, hello. My name is Eric Frobes. My address is 109 Concord Street. I'm basically the only budding property that isn't owned. Covert question. It seems like you have a focusing on, focus, oh, the question of a two-and-a-half-story building in my mind and just common sense, it's more than just a question of height. It's not a question of how much material, how much building you can fit in a box and call two-and-a-half stories. I mean, from my point of view, just putting a little roof trim line underneath so they get to call a three-story building a two-and-a-half-story building and take advantage of all code violations or being codes that don't even exist in this city. That's all I really wanted to say.
Okay, thank you. Any questions from the board? Mr. Sylvia.
Are there any other three-story buildings in the neighborhood?
No, I mean, it's pretty isolated. There's a large church across the street. The properties that were created, I don't know, the back is, but...
They're mostly ranches.
Yeah. Typically ranches, the newer stuff. I don't know what it's qualified as because it looks like three stories in the front, but the back is a, you know, the lower stories underground, only two are showing. But, um, no, typically they're on three-story buildings in the neighborhood.
So what you're saying is this would look out of place to someone just driving down Concord Street looking at it?
I don't want to speak for people driving by. I'm just the guy who has to live behind it. And I mean, I missed the first variance meeting where they got to put these two buildings in a lot that's only big enough to hold one of them by the vision code. I don't know what rationale there was behind that. In addition, I'm concerned because, I'm sorry?
Sorry, a duplex is a single building with two, two units.
Yeah, they're putting two duplexes in the lot. They're not putting a single duplex. They're putting two duplexes in this lot.
They're subdivided into two lots.
Oh, they're subdividing into two lots, okay. I missed that.
Additionally, the new duplex closes to our driveway, is back further than the old law office, and now going up three full stories. Does a, it's a bigger effect on our skyline, our view, and our yard.
Okay, thank you. Any further questions from the board? Anybody else with questions, concerns, or opposition? Okay, the applicant has five minutes to present a rebuttal, if he wishes. And speaking to the concerns that were just presented.
I apologize, Mr. Linell. I'm having a little harder time hearing you. But do, I have a few minutes to rebut?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. To go back to one of the questions that was asked about the separation, there are several properties to the north of us, including Kirkpatrick Store and several others that are, that are quite tall, that exceed 35 feet. So we certainly aren't the last tall building. You're going to go beyond us, and there are, there are other tall buildings on, on Concord Street. So we won't by any stretch be the tallest. To, to be clear, it is two duplex lots, so there will be four housing units on these two duplex lots. And they will butt up against the condos that were recently completed down to Greeley Park in the south. So, um, those are, those are the two main things. But, but again, there, there is tall housing to the north of, of our properties, and we will not by any stretch be the tallest. And as you go to the south, there are, there are clearly homes that are much, much taller than, than this building. And then, and you know, in the end, we will, we will work with the Frobes to develop some landscape buffer. I mean, a six-foot stockade fence or an eight-foot stockade fence is not going to hide their home, but if we were to put some trees in and some other things that will grow up and create a buffer, and then eventually tie into Greeley Park in terms of the tree growth and things like that, it should, it should create a very nice setting for everybody.
Thank you. Mr. Frobes, you, you have five minutes, if you wish, to make a final comment in rebuttal to what he just said. Yep, go up to the microphone and just, please give your name and address for the record again, please.
Okay, once again, my name is Eric Frobes, and I reside at 109 Concord Street. I just have, well, that sounds great, and I'm glad it sounds like it wants to work with me. I'm familiar with the size of the lot, and given where the foundation's going, there's not a lot of room to be planting trees, especially not to obscure a three-story structure between the properties. It's kind of, it's a very difficult promise.
Okay, thank you. All right, so I will, at that point, close the public hearing and open the public meeting. Again, Mr. Patry and Ms. Boras will be voting on this one, but any of the other board members may pipe in with their comments. And we'll start with Mr. Patry. Your comments.
I'm interested in hearing from what the others in the board have to say. I mean, my, my initial thought is that I'm not sure how much practical difference approving this would make, but I'd, but I'd like to hear others' thoughts.
Okay, Ms. Boras.
I feel the same way. I'd like to hear what our other colleagues have to say.
Okay.
Very close.
Mr. Sylvia.
From, from my knowledge of the area, I don't, from what I saw, it didn't look like the proposal was very different than a lot of the buildings in that area, but I don't know every single building in that area. That's why I asked that question. I, I'm not voting on this one, but I guess I could go either way. So again, I'd like to hear what the others on the board has to say. I'm on the fence.
Okay, Mr. Neely.
Well, I'm not going to kick the can down the...
Sorry. That would not be like you.
No, that would be out of character. So, so I, I do remember when this case came up the first time, and I did vote in favor of it. If you guys remember, it was that odd-shaped lot, and we were kind of trying to make something happen there from, from an old antiquated law office. I, I was interested and curious the first time that the folks at 109 didn't show up because that, that property is so much lower than, than the property we're talking about right now. It's a, it's a pretty significant drop-off. I, I took another, I've taken multiple drive-bys by this to try to just get a good feel. I took another one today after receiving the, the letter from, from the folks at 109. And I, I do believe that these, these two duplexes sit exactly west of that, of that, of 109. So I do believe the folks behind there at 109 are going to, going to be negatively affected on the amount of sun they get in the, in the, in the summer. Once again, because they sit so, so much lower. So we've been going back and forth here about, you know, a couple inches here or there, but I do believe that if we allow the three-story on this one, this building is going to be just, it's going to be bulkier. And I do believe these folks at 109 are going to be more significantly affected just because they're going to lose even more sunlight. If you, if you have the two-and-a-half with, with some dormers that are, that are, you know, a different shape, they're probably going to get a little more sun back there. So as of right now, I, I am leaning against this. I do believe that we need to stand with the two-and-a-half stories, not three, as proposed in this, in this, in this application. So as of right now, I am not in favor of this application.
Thank you. Mr. Boucher.
Again, I was here also on the previous, when I'm applying the first time, and I was in favor of the application. I had, I had voted to approve the application. So, so the, so again, we're, we're, we're really here because the, the applicant is adding dormers. And I could understand the, the request for the extra square footage, especially with the way the homes were designed and with the two-car garage. I, I think that obviously that takes away a lot from the, from the first floor. I, I think that, again, we've seen in general a lot of requests for two-car garages in Nashua, and I think that that's something more customary now than probably was 30 years ago. So I, I understand that aspect of it. So, again, I'm, I guess I don't, I'm not feeling strongly that I would oppose the application for the, for the, for the, for the dormer, third story. I, I am very cognizant of the neighbors in, in the rear. I don't know, again, with, you know, to your point about the sunlight and all, if there was, if there happened to be mature plantings and all that stuff, I, I don't know, you know, what sunlight would be or wouldn't be there. So I guess I'm not, I'm not, I'm not falling one way or another right now. I, I can see an argument for both sides, so that's where I'll leave it.
Okay. Yeah, I, I was not present at the previous meeting that discussed this, but, you know, to me, there's, you know, there's a difference between, you know, a regular, you know, dormer, and I live in a Cape that has front dormers and, and the front walls are maybe two and a half feet or so. But making this a, basically a full dormer building, a full three-story building visually is very different and has a, has a significant impact. The, so I'm, usually what we say is, you know, there's unique conditions of the property that make a variance request appropriate. For example, we've had properties that had a, a big drop-off in the back for that, that property, and I'm not sure if this one does or not. That hasn't been, well, I know, obviously, the folks at 109, they live behind it, but I meant on, on this part of the property itself. I hadn't seen that when I was walking by it. So I'm, you know, I, I understand that the desire is to provide some, a little bit more full living space. Now, I, as I said, my house has got slanted walls the way a lot of, of New England houses do. I'm currently not in favor, but maybe be interested to hear comments from the folks who were, wanted to comment before. Yes, Mr. Patry, Mr. Sylvia.
Question for staff through the chair. It's looked like in the letter from the budding property owners that there was changes from the February hearing, and I'm hearing from the applicant that there wasn't. Were there any changes from the original plan that was presented in February?
I'm not aware of any.
Well, there wasn't, the, the change was to basically have a full dormer instead of a...
Besides.
Besides, so it's not exactly the same?
That's the only difference.
Okay, because I was, I was about to say, if that was approved in February, I would assume that the height would be a part of what was approved of that.
Height's not changing, but the bulk of the building is.
Like you can see, the, the peak of a two-and-a-half versus a three, the peak is the same.
Yeah.
It's just, instead of going like this, it's going to be more...
Okay, because if it was identical, then I would assume this would be a moot point, but I just want to double-check.
Yeah. Ms. Boras, do you have any further thoughts?
I'm still on the fence.
I think I'm leaning no. I think a good point about the sunlight, I think it kind of swayed me a bit.
Another, another question. If those, again, I might be wrong about this, but in the letter, there was concerns about erosion. Is there any, anything related to that, in your opinion? Is that important here?
I don't think so. I mean, we, there is a city ordinance that says that... There is a city ordinance that says that building on a lot cannot create any more runoff onto surrounding properties, and so the property owner would be required to prevent that. And I think we had testimony that that would be happening.
It's got to be graded properly.
Yes, it has to be graded properly with drainage and proper infiltration so that there is no additional runoff onto surrounding properties. Thank you. That's a city requirement. Anybody else? So let's see. We have Mr. Patry, myself, and I think Mr. Boucher on the no side. Mr. Neely, I didn't, don't remember where it was that you were...
I was in the no.
You were the, okay. So would somebody care to make a motion? Mr. Neely, thank you. And we need reasons.
Yeah.
We have been reminded we need reasons.
Like I make a motion to deny the variance for Crimson Properties LLC owner, 75 Deerwood Drive LLC, Peter Doloff, applicant, 111 Concord Street, Sheet 48, Lot 47, requesting a variance from land use code section 190-16, Table 16-3, to exceed a maximum number of stories, two and a half permitted, three proposed, for two duplex units approved by the zoning board of adjustment on 2/27/24. This is in the RA zone in Ward 3. Under the application, the request was that the variance is needed to enable the applicant's proposed use of the property, given the special conditions of the property, and the benefits sought by the applicant cannot be achieved by some other method reasonably feasible for the applicant to pursue other than the variance. We do not find this to be, number one, to be applicable, in that we find that there's no unique factors to the property. As discussed, this property had passed through the zoning board once before with the original two and a half stories. We have found that bulking up this property may negatively affect the property located at 109 Concord, which is directly behind this building. The board did discuss the fact that sunlight may be blocked due to the bulkier building and that there are other ways that these folks would be able to potentially find some square footage. We did find that their request to have the two-car garage was reasonable for Nashua, as many folks do request that. But that being said, we did not feel that going to the third, for third full story was necessary. We feel that this was not within the spirit and intent of the ordinance. We do believe that the Nashua ordinance as written to maximize two and a half stories is applicable in this area and for this property specifically. We did talk about the fact that this property is in front of a, another property owner that's down a hill. We had extensive discussion about the transition of this property from north to south, whether it's smaller to the north, and transition to larger to the south. However, with Greeley Park in between, we do believe that this ordinance as written is applicable. We did not have any specific conversation about whether the property values would be adversely affected. I know that neither the applicant nor the dissenters discussed property value specifically, with the exception of a statement saying that many folks who purchase properties enjoy having more square footage. But as to 109, we did not have any specific conversation about property value. We do believe this is contrary to the public interest, specifically that this property will be significantly hanging over the neighbors, possibly blocking their sunlight in the summer months. We do feel that substantial justice for the neighborhood is properly taken care of by the statements as noted before for the first four questions. We do believe that the neighbors will get substantial justice through this being denied because of the size of the building. So for those reasons, I make a motion to deny the variance.
Second? Mr. Patry, thank you for your second. Any discussion of the motion? Ready to vote? All those in favor of the motion, raise your hand. One, two, three. Mr. Boucher, how are you voting? Oh, you're not voting on that? Okay, you're not that, all those not in favor of the motion, raise your hand.
Yeah, it would be obviously...
That would be Mr. Boucher, okay. So it's four to one. I'm sorry that your variance application was not approved. If you wish to discuss review requests, please contact me. Moving on to the next case, and for this case, Ms. Boras and Mr. Sylvia will be voting.
Could you all pull your mics closer to you, we can hardly hear you.
Well, we can try to do that.
Thank you.
Does that help any? I don't know whether the speakers are on, are they? Something's on, okay, we'll try, try to speak up to.
Thank you.
Okay. Case number two, and I'm probably going to get the name wrong. Owner is Robert Isley, address 115 Westwood Drive, Sheet B, Lot 682, requesting the following variances.
That was from Willfield.
It's okay. From, one, from land use code section 190-17E2, to allow a driveway within 50 feet of an intersection, 18 feet proposed. And two, from land use code section 190-17E1, to exceed maximum driveway width, 24 feet permitted, 20 feet existing, and additional 16-foot wide driveway proposed for a total width of 36 feet. This is in the R9 zone, Ward 9. Is there somebody here to present the case? Thank you. Come up to the lectern and make sure you speak into the microphone, give your name and address, and tell us what you'd like to do.
Good evening. Robert Isle, live at 115 Westwood Drive, this is my wife...
You can lift that up if you need to, or just pull it out and hold it if you wish.
Oh, great, even easier. Robert Isle, 115 Westwood Drive, this is my wife Cynthia. I've been on that property, it's a corner lot here in South Nashua. I've been on that, lived in that house now for 32 years. Last November, my wife was diagnosed with ALS, and so we are looking to install a 16-foot wide driveway to the, in the front of the house that leads out to the road. We're here because this is within 50 feet of the intersection, thus causing the variance. We're looking to install a 16-foot wide driveway outside of our front door, which would then lead to the street. And then upon sale of the house, X number of years from now, this would be torn back up and grass would be put back on the way it is currently. What other questions do we have here at this point?
Just wanted to say it will be a temporary structure. Everybody, I'm sure, is aware what ALS is, but the, you know, it's not going to be there for a real long time because unfortunately, it's, the lifespan of somebody with ALS isn't that long, so it would be temporary. And it would enable me to get in and out of my house easier. We have 14 stairs that go up the back, the back of the house to get in, and the front of the house doesn't have access with a driveway or whatnot to enter the house at this time.
Okay, thank you. Any questions from the board? Mr. Sylvia?
Would it be possible to put a ramp on the back where the stairs are?
So the yard is very sloped and the amount of ramping that it would take to meet code, it would be just up a whole yard. It would be, and probably impossible to get a wheelchair with all the twists and turns that would, that would be required to put an appropriate ramp in place.
Do you have any idea of how many cars, on average, during a day, go past your intersection there?
During the day, so I'm, you know, the busiest part of the day is obviously in the morning and in the evening. During the day, I'm going to say probably no more than 20 at the most. It's pretty quiet during the day.
Thank you.
Mr. Neely?
Question for staff. Do we, if we were to move down the route of approving this with a caveat, it has to be ripped out at some point, do we have to put a timeframe on it, or can we say upon sale of houses, as they were just talking about?
I can answer that one.
Oh, great.
The RSAs provide putting a condition for somebody who's disabled, as we have here, that the variance would expire when the disabled person is no longer needs to use the, whatever change was made. And so we would put in there the condition with, you know, at the sale of the house or when it was no longer necessary, then the second driveway would be removed.
Great, thank you.
Did I get that right?
Yeah, that's fine.
Close enough, okay.
The board can always put a reasonable timeframe, like 10 years from now, or seven years from now, or something like that.
Oh, 50 years from now.
How about that, 50? Let's hope it is 50.
Any more questions from the board? No? Okay. Right, so you may go back and have a seat. Is there anybody here who wishes to speak in favor of this application? Okay, sir, oh, we do have, we have a, we have a letter? Oh, yes, we do have a letter, but I'll get to that, okay.
I am sorry about my not getting a letter to you.
No, that's fine.
I didn't know about the deadline until after the holiday.
Okay, please give me your name and address.
I am Lee Newcomb, 32 Weathersfield Road. I'm back neighbor on a corner with Bob. I am used to that intersection. I agree with their desire to have this driveway put in. My question, it's actually a question, is can we have a stop sign put on Westwood to have the people coming east on Westwood?
Unfortunately, that's the sort of thing you have to bring up to your alderman. It's the board of aldermen who instigate the traffic sign changes. This board cannot do that.
Well, my concern is, is the people, that I understand what they're saying about traffic, but I do see people coming and making that right turn off of Westwood to go down Wilmington.
Yep.
And they aren't always slow. That is my only concern.
Yeah, that's, that's nothing that we can consider. Yeah, but you would have to discuss that with your board.
If you approve this, I will contact that, what department again?
The board, your board alderman.
The alderman?
Alderman, yes.
Not the traffic department?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, the aldermen are the ones who have to initiate the request. I mean, the traffic department would actually do it if they chose to, but the alderman, you have to, you have to start with the alderman.
I have a question. Just going back to what I asked the applicant, how many cars on an average day would you say are at that intersection?
I do not know. I do not know the statistics. I think they had the statistics already.
Okay.
My concern is, is that I've been living there for 40-some years in that area, and you have an intersection there where people going up Wilmington do not have a stop sign. People coming east on Westwood do not have a stop sign. And I have seen two almost collisions at that intersection, one of them with me, because the people coming up were going to make that left turn, and I was going straight, staying on Westwood.
Well, I guess my...
So this is something that I should have talked to the traffic department for years. So thank you for asking for this, so that I will actually talk to them.
Yeah, I guess to rephrase my question, how frequently does this happen? What, the things that you're saying?
Let's see, I've lived here since 1986 at this address, so twice in that number of years.
Oh, okay.
So it's not that frequent.
Okay.
But it only takes once to kill somebody. I've had enough accidents in other ways, too, that I do not wish to go through because they have nothing to do with this context. But that is, my main concern is that intersection and her safety getting parked. Thank you. Any more questions?
No, thank you. And we have, do have a letter in favor from Maria, Marianna McIntosh Morgan, living at 7 Wilmington Street, offering full support of the project for the two variances to be granted for excessive driveway width. Our house directly faces the side lot where the new driveway will be proposed, and we understand the need to create an accessible route into the house. This will minimally impact the neighborhood and street and ask that the ZBA support this proposal. Okay, so are, is there anybody in the audience, anybody else in the audience who wishes to speak in favor of this application? Is there anybody in the audience who wishes to speak with questions, concerns, or opposition to the application? I'm not seeing any? Okay, I will close the public hearing and open the public meeting. Mr. Boucher, your comments?
I'm in favor of the application, obviously, for a couple of reasons. Again, to satisfy the applicant's need for this driveway so that they can easily get in and out of their home. Unique, the unique conditions of the property are, again, I'm very familiar with this neighborhood. My in-laws lived on Westwood Drive, very familiar with that intersection, but once you get, they lived on the outside of Westwood Drive, the opposite side, coming down, and they had installed a stop sign years ago before you could take a left on Wilmington, but coming down the hill and, you know, I know what happens there. But again, the topography over there is pretty dramatic. That's very hilly neighborhood. So again, there is really no possible way to put, reasonably try to accommodate the applicant to get into the home any other way than this. And again, with the fact that this driveway would be removed at some time in the future, I think it works out. So again, I think like any other part of the city, there is issues with some neighborhoods with speed and all that. I don't think that we can use, I would not use this against this applicant's need for this driveway at this time. So I'm going to be in full support of this application.
Thank you. Mr. Neely?
Yeah, I'm also in support. You know, when you first take a look at this, if we didn't have these extenuating circumstances, it would probably be a no. But that being said, now that we've heard about the slope of the yard, it's not a busy neighborhood when it comes to traffic, certainly not a main street. So Mr. Boucher said it well for most of the points, and I guess the only thing that I would be looking to discuss with the rest of the board is how we want to do special conditions on the back end about when to take the driveway up.
We'll get to that in a moment. Mr. Sylvia?
I would support this, and I'd like to make a motion about it once we get to that point. I think the key thing here is if it was a more densely packed area, it might not be appropriate, but this neighborhood seems like it would be safe to do this. Mr. Boucher's comments about the topography also make a point, if it was a flatter area, it might be easier to have a ramp in the back, but that might not, that doesn't seem possible here, so I would support this.
Thank you. Ms. Boras?
I'm also in support, for all the reasons my colleagues already stated.
Thank you. Mr. Patry?
Also in favor, and for the same reasons.
And I'm also in support. So let's discuss the condition, and the way that the RSAs put it is when the, when the disabled person is no longer needs the accommodation. And it doesn't, there doesn't have to be a time limit on it, it doesn't necessarily have to be on a sale. Obviously, if there's a sale, then they're not using it anymore. But I think we would put the condition in something about, you know, when, you know, when there is, you know, when there's no longer need for, Mr. Sylvia?
Yeah.
I think it'd be appropriate to have it as, as long as the idlies live in the house.
I'm not a doctor, but I believe ALS can't be reversed, so just have it as, as long as they're in the house. So the next, normally, as you know, variances run with the property, but in this case, it would be appropriate, so as long as they're there, I think.
Yeah, okay, that, yeah.
I guess if we could ask them, does that, would that work for you folks? As long as you're living in the house, that, and they're shaking their heads, yes, so...
Yeah, okay. All right. So would somebody care to make a motion with that condition? Okay, thank you, Mr. Sylvia.
All right. In the matter of Robert Isley, owner, 115 Westwood Drive, Sheet B, Lot 682, requesting the following variances. One, from land use code...
the following variances: One, from land use code Section 190-17E2 to allow a driveway within 50 feet of an intersection, 18 feet proposed; and Two, from land use code Section 190-17E1 to exceed the maximum driveway width, 24 feet permitted and 20 feet existing, additional 16-foot wide driveway for a proposed total of 36 feet, in the R9 Zone Ward 9. I move in favor of granting these variances. One, the variance is needed to enable the applicant's proposed use of the property, given the special conditions of the property, and the benefits sought by the applicant cannot be achieved by some other method reasonably feasible for the applicant to pursue other than the variance. We discussed the infeasibility of the ramp in the backyard. That could be a possibility, but not in this case. So this seems to be the only way for the occupants of the house to get enjoyment of the property. Two, it's within spirit and intent of the ordinance. In this situation, I believe the spirit and intent of the ordinance is safety, and I do not believe that any safety for the residents or the neighbors would be impacted by this new driveway, given the limited amount of cars in that area. Three, this will not adversely affect the property values of surrounding parcels. There, every property in that neighborhood has a driveway, so I don't think anyone will notice it too much. Four, it's not contrary to the public interest. No one is being harmed by this, and the owners of the property will be helped significantly. And five, this still provides substantial justice. This allows the occupants of the property to get more use of the property than they have now. And I also would like to add a special condition that this, these variances will expire upon the departure of the Isley family from this property.
Do I have a second? Ms. Boras, thank you for your second. Any discussion of the motion? Ready to vote? All those in favor? That's unanimous. Congratulations, your variance has been approved. Please be aware, there's a 30-day window of appeal. Contact the planning department if you have any questions. And live long and prosper, as they say. Okay, moving on to case number three. Owner is the James K. Stellows Revocable Trust. Applicant is Daniel Flores. Address 2 and L Oldfield Road. Sheet A, lots 270 and 322, requesting variance from land use code Section 190-17B to exceed maximum number of principal structures allowed per lot, one permitted, four single-family detached units proposed. This is the R9 Zone Ward 7. We did hear this case before, but this is a rehearing because it appeared that not all of the abutters were notified. So we're basically doing it over. Is there somebody here to present the case? Okay, please step up to the lectern and give your name and address to the record, and tell us what you'd like to do.
Mr. Chair, members of the board, my name is Dan Flores with SFC Engineering, address 183 Rockingham Road, Wyndham, New Hampshire. I'm here on behalf of the Stellows Family Investment Properties LLC. Before I begin, just one note, this application was made out to the Stellows Family Investment Properties. The original hearing was for the James K. Stellows Revocable Trust, same principles. Just note that the current notice was made out to the previous entity. So yeah, we're here for rehearing. This was approved unanimously last time. We have seen a butter comments as part of that rehearing, and we have modified the plan to address those comments. The, the property in question is 2 Oldfield Road and L Oldfield Road. They're both at the end of Oldfield Road. 2 Oldfield has been in the Stellows family for years, as well as L. Number two had the family home on it. L has sat vacant for years and years. It's located right beside the Daniel Webster Highway. There is wetlands along the back portion of the property. And it, the L lot fronts on the portion of paper street of Oldfield Road. Basically, Oldfield Road was constructed up to 2 Oldfield Road, and then it remains a paper street today as an undeveloped right-of-way. The proposal is to combine the two lots into 1.55 acres. This new combined lot will have 339.5 feet, where 60 feet of frontage is required. We've made a change in that our first proposal had shown us removing the paper street. That is no longer the case. As you can see on the plan in front of you, the, the right-of-way is not touched. We also have, since that time, had the wetlands delineated and surveyed. The plan shows the actual location of the wetlands with the 40-foot buffer. The combining of the two lots allows us to fit four residential structures on the now single lot without touching the wetlands, without touching the 40-foot wetland buffer, and again, we don't touch the paper street right-of-way. This configuration provides six point, 2.6 units per acre for density, where six is allowed, so we're much, much below the maximum density. The open space requirement is exceeded. We have 62% provided where 50% is required, so more open space than required. That takes into account the wetlands. This layout also provides a 20-foot fire access with fire truck turnaround, and each, each of those buildings will have parking for two cars. This proposal, other than having multiple structures in one lot, meets all requirements of the zoning ordinance. I will take a minute now just to read through the five criteria. So number one, granting the requested variance will not be contrary to public interest because the variance will not be contrary to public interest as it implements the purpose of the urban residence zoning district by allowing development of single-family residences. The resulting development will be similar to existing development in the neighborhood. Number two, the proposed use will observe the spirit of the ordinance because, the spirit of the ordinance is met because the proposed use of single-family residences is permitted within this zone, and the development will meet all setbacks required in the zone. Number three, substantial justice will be done to the property owner by granting the variance because this variance will allow the landowner to make best use of their property, which has sat vacant for decades. The property identified as Lot A322, which is L Oldfield Road, is an existing lot of record that is burdened by wetlands along the back portion, which hampers effective development of the lot, resulting in a portion of the Oldfield Road right-of-way remaining undeveloped and a paper street to this day. This proposal allows development of this property while protecting wetlands and with no impact to the paper street. Number four, the proposed use will not diminish the values of surrounding properties because property values are expected to increase due to this development of highly sought-after single-family homes. And number five, special conditions exist such that literal enforcement of the ordinance results in unnecessary hardship because the special circumstances include the existing lot of record requiring access from the undeveloped paper street of Oldfield Road right-of-way, and the wetlands formed along the back of the lot due to development of Daniel Webster Highway. These site constraints place a financial burden on the landowner development due to required Oldfield Road construction and limited development area remaining from the wetland buffer. Combining this lot with A270, which is 2 Oldfield Road, allows the development of six single-family homes on one combined lot while preserving the wetland and meeting all setbacks of the zoning ordinance. Have to take any questions?
Any questions from the board? Mr. Neely?
I think you just said that you were constructing six properties, but I don't see four on this drawing. Is it four?
Yes, it's four.
It's four?
Yep.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Not seeing any? Okay, can I have a seat?
Thank you.
Is there anybody present who wishes to speak in favor of this application? Thank you. Come up and give your name and address to the record, but we are familiar with you.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, good evening. My name is Andy Prohlman, attorney with attorney and Prohlman, counsel for Stellows Family Investment Properties Limited Liability Company. I agree with everything Dan just said, and I just want to bring the board's attention to 122 Manchester Street. This, this proposal before you, as it was before you, it was before you last time, but it had the discontinuance of Oldfield, which kind of complicated matters. So now we've taken that discontinuance off the table. This project, this proposal before you is very much like, very similar to 122 Manchester Street, going back a few years. If you recall, this is the property that's across from the Baptist Church. It had an older home on an, on an oversized lot on Manchester Street, just like we have here. And that proposal originally was something like a lump, like many townhouse units, 22 units, and it went nowhere. Then my client came along and said, let's, let's propose four units, this board, and it's the very same variance that we're requesting tonight, multiple principal structures on one lot. This board approved that, went to the planning board. The project recently sold out. Now we have four families living there. It's a really good project. We have the same thing here. So we are hopeful that you will support this project like we did, the Manchester Street project. So thank you.
Thank you. Any questions from the board? For Attorney Prohlman? No? Okay, thanks. Anybody else who wishes to speak in favor of this application? Is there anybody with questions, concerns, or opposition to the application? Come up to, come up to the microphone.
I was here in May. My name is Cliff Banner, 459 South Main Street. My wife Linda. I don't know if that Manchester Street involved the wetland situation, sir? Did it?
No, because the conservation easement involved, I'll try to explain.
Okay. So the, some of the objections that we talked about before, let me ask you one other question. Am I the only one allowed to speak, or we have two, two abutters with me?
No, you, any, anybody with questions, concerns, or opposition can come up and have five minutes.
I thought at the beginning it was either one person. Okay, so we went from a current situation, which has established 2 and L Oldfield Road as a single lot. The variance is asking for only to allow the building of four residences on this single lot. It didn't go to one, added, then it go to two, then go to three. This whole area, I believe that some of you have walked it or seen it, is a highly sloped area off of Oldfield Road, almost immediately. If I can, just for reference's sake. House one?
You need to speak into the microphone. You can pull up the microphone if you need to.
House one, I'm just referring to that as the site of the current building which will be raised, the Stellows family home. Just for reference, number two, sitting in back of it, this lot currently is about 25 to 30 feet below the level of Oldfield Road. Number three, and number four, I can almost see the variance for two houses being put here. They claim city services, sewer, water. I believe that probably requires that they raise those homes to the level of Oldfield Road. Don't know. Doesn't say. We have no idea if these are ranch homes, two-story, three-story, townhouses, just a single-family dwellings, single residences. That's a, an issue. I'm going to take this down, just so, one, two, three, and four. Three and four are directly across from my residence, and they abut my neighbor Dawn and Denise Jettie's home, number four does. I know that some of these questions are going to go into planning board issues and not variance board.
Yes, the types of houses and things like that. Yes, that would be planning board.
Okay, so I'm just going to look at the, at the floor, at the rectangle defining the homes. Number two, number three, and number four lie directly against the buffer, the wetlands buffer. Unless you have a vertical wall like Lowe's hardware, it cannot be done. Your, even a, a five-degree or 15-degree embankment will cover the wetland buffer. The house number two, which is in back of the current residence, and also, it lies, it lies on the wetland buffer. There's no room for construction around that space. They're going to have to go into the wetland buffer and destroy it to build it up. If these homes are at the general level where sewer would work in Nashua with all pumps and special other features, they'll, they'll have to be probably 500,000 to a million or more cubic feet of, of fill put in. That fill, according to the conservation rules, needs to be compatible with the current skunk cabbage growing loose, wet soil. The abutters lands for, for Met, myself, and Jettie's all sloped down rather rapidly to the Oldfield Road. There's no evidence of a request for deviation from the conservation laws about putting a culvert or multiple culverts in to allow water to run down to the wetlands. The city services, well, maybe not city services, so I'll, I guess I have to, I'll ask a question, and hopefully the rebuttal will answer it.
You'll have to finish up.
Okay. Is gas service requested? Also, the proposal says that there'll, there'll be, that the Oldfield Road portions will remain undeveloped. If that's the case, then we're guaranteed of some kind of a tree buffer. But again, for all of this construction, they're going to have to go well into the Oldfield Road and well into the wetlands buffer to do any type of work.
They, they would need a special exception to do work in the wetlands.
They would, they would actually have to get a permits for culverts and so on, because the water's got to go somewhere. And those aren't, there's no evidence that has been asked for.
Yeah, but that's, that's not what we're discussing today.
Okay. Our biggest point concern is the, the loss of privacy and the reduction of value of our homes.
It's pretty much up.
Okay, I'll turn it over to the next speaker.
Dawn Jettie, 459 and a half, South Main Street. Okay.
Hold, hold the microphone up to your mouth.
I'm a direct abutter to the, what Cliff would call number four house. And what is, what bothers us in this regard is that drop where you see the corner of my property is at the very corner of the number four property, where it says the word "back," setback, okay? From there, the property drops a good, I want to say at least eight feet. I mean, it's very steep. And they're going to have to, they're going to have-
Sir, just pull up the microphone up, because we're recording this, and if the people can't hear you in the recording, then that causes a problem. Feel free to put it in the stand if that would help, help you.
Okay. We're bothered by where that runoff is going to go. Right now, I had brought a clip of the water, the rain that we've had this past spring, and we literally got, instead of a brook, we got a river back there. And it went from three feet wide to 15 feet wide. And when they, when Stellows removed the pool that they had in the back of the yard, they ended up with- they ended up with all sorts of silt running down that brook. And I mean, it was, used to be clear, it ended up being the color of this floor. I think there was some disregard to the runoff in that area when they were moving that dirt and whatever they had back there. Our concern is, that might happen again, because you've got three homes here that are right on the edge of the lot. And I don't wanna have the runoff going towards my yard, towards my house, and that type of thing.
Yeah, as I mentioned in a previous case, the city has rules that forbid any construction that creates increased runoff to surrounding properties. And so the applicant would be required by the city to mitigate that in some appropriate manner.
As far as the property value, we all have large homes in this area. And I believe Stellows just put up four large homes themselves, right next to Riviera College. And putting these four homes here, the lots are not gonna be very big. It's just, it's, to me, it seems like they're just crowding everything in. And I really think it's gonna hurt the property value more than raise up the property value. The other things I have of concern, we'll have to go to the planning board, like foundation, height, and all that kinda stuff. But my, you know, buffers between the 10-foot setback in our property, not quite sure what they had in mind there. I haven't seen anything in writing.
10-foot setback is what's required in that zone, side yard, what we call a side yard setback.
Okay. Okay, now that's awful, that's at a slope as well, in both two directions.
Yeah, on the side, and then there's what's called a front yard setback and a rear yard setback. And the city ordinances specify in each zone what those required distances are.
That's what I have at this time.
Yep. Okay, thank you. Anybody else with questions, concerns, or opposition? Thank you, come up to the lectern again and give us your name and address. Feel free to adjust the microphone as you need to. Pull it down or take it out, your choice.
Linda Banner, 459 South Main Street. I wish you could see the video that Dawn has of the water in the backyard, because it wasn't just a little brook. It is Hartwell Brook. So there's a reason, the reason it has a name, because it was a brook. But the water looked like rapids coming over, and it was speeding down. I'd like to know who gets sued when the houses have water in their basement? Is it gonna be the contractor, or is it gonna be the city? If it's the city, I don't wanna have to pay that bill, okay? I don't know if these are gonna be slabs, or if they're gonna have foundations, a cellar. So that makes a difference. There's gonna be no backyard to these houses, because that's gonna be wetland buffer. Okay, and as my husband had said, you're gonna have to have some kind of retaining wall there to get that slope, even with a road, because I'm sure they're not gonna have a split-level kind of deal, because there is quite a slope there. And basically, my feeling is that skunk cabbage tells you something. It says, "Do not build here." That's what skunk cabbage says. And in the spring, you've got a good batch of skunk cabbage growing there. I'm also worried about having the trees removed, and then they find out, oh, we really can't build here. And then we'd be without the trees that are a wonderful buffer for the road that we hit. We hear not only Daniel Webster Highway, but we hear the Route 3, because we've got those two layers that we can actually hear them, the constant drone of the noise. So in the summer, it's buffered by the trees, in the winter, it gets pretty loud. I don't know what these houses are gonna sound like when they're down there. So I think you're doing a disservice to anyone who lives in those houses, because they're gonna have the water that they're gonna have, they have to look at a 20-foot drop of Daniel Webster Highway as their backyard, plus they're gonna have the noise. So I can see, I can see two possible homes there, but I sure can't see four. I don't know, how many, how many spaces, how many houses do you wanna cram in anyway? I don't, I don't know. I don't understand. And as far as saying that the property had just been left empty, yeah, because they enjoyed it just like that, and that's why it was empty. There was no, I'm sure they loved having the trees there in the woods, so that's why it wasn't developed when Mr. Stellows lived there, because he liked it like that. So it's, I don't think it was any skin off his nose not to have it developed. And thank you for your consideration.
Any questions from the board? No? All right, thank you. Anybody else with questions, concerns, or opposition?
Hi, my name is Denise Jettie. I live at 459 and a half, South Main. Neighbor's to Linda and Cliff Banner and Mr. Vermette. And I do agree with what they had to say, especially with the raging river. Come springtime, we panic, because the water does get very, very high. And my backyard turns into a swamp. And I agree with two houses, not four. I love the trees, I love the area, the quietness of my yard, but in the summertime and in the springtime, right now is extremely, extremely noisy, between DW Highway being so busy and Route 3 being so busy. We sit outside in the summertime, we have to stop talking, because we can't hear ourselves. That's how noisy it gets. I just feel bad if somebody buys one of the homes, they're gonna say, wow, we can't hear ourselves think. You can be inside the home, and you can hear the motorcycles go by, even though the windows are closed. And like I said, it does get very, very noisy. There are no buffers for us. We tend to count on the trees, especially through the spring, the summer, and the fall, to try to like, cancel out some of the noise. But like I said, in the summer, spring and summer, we have to worry about the rain, because it does flow. So I agree with two, I have no issues with two. But four, I think it's probably pushing. Thank you.
I do have a question. Can you explain to me how two houses would mitigate some of the issues that you've raised?
I'm sorry?
Well, you and others have said that two houses would be okay, but four is too many. Can you tell me why that makes a difference in the issues that you've talked about?
Because we're, we would be saving the trees, and we still have some form of buffers, and nothing would be in the wetlands.
So you're suggesting that the two houses that are on, in the left of the plan could be built, and then the ones that are in the right, in the other lot would not be built where the wetlands are? Is that your idea?
The ones like where the original Stellows' house is?
Yeah.
That area, but coming off to the other side? I think it would be way too close.
Okay, thanks.
Okay.
Mr. Sylvia.
Have you or any of the other abutters contacted environmental scientists to get more data on the wetlands behind your houses?
Um, no, we've gotten, I've gotten in touch with, I don't remember her name, the conservation person who works here. And she didn't have much info to help me out with, but we've researched into some things with Concord and stuff, and there's like all different, there's so many different guidelines as far as the buffers are concerned and the wetlands are concerned. So, because it's, where the wetlands are, and where the land is and where the trees are, there's a huge slope. And like in the wintertime, you have a pond back there. My kids used to go ice skating there, when they were young, and stuff. So there was a lot, a lot of water. And then, like I said, when things melt down in the spring, here we go.
Do you have any pictures of that? Or, I know you, was there some discussion of a video? Do you guys have any of that?
Yes, my husband took a video of the whole thing.
Do you have that tonight?
Yes, yeah.
Can we see it?
Yep. My husband does have it with him.
Mr. Chair, can we see this, or?
I have not seen it.
Could we see it?
Has it been sent to the city?
We don't have a copy of it. I mean, anything, anything that's submitted to the board, we have to keep for 30 days. So if it's on someone's cellphone, we'd have to keep it for 30 days.
He's got it on a stick.
Or if they have a S drive or stick they wanna let us have for 30 days, we can give it back.
Well, we couldn't see it tonight.
Unless you wanna table it and look at it.
So what does this show, what the, this?
You can just take their word for it, that there's water.
The, okay, we set up cameras and stuff, because we like to catch the wildlife that goes around the backyard and stuff. And my husband recorded the entire thing the summer with the bad rainstorm we had, with the water just gushing. And it's not the first time it's happened. It's like that every single spring.
Okay.
And summer.
We'll just take your word for it at this point.
Okay. Thank you.
Anybody else with questions, concerns, or opposition? Not seeing any, okay. So, who would like to come up and give the rebuttal?
Attorney Prohm? Mr. Chairman, members again, Andy Prohm, Stellows Family Investment Properties. A couple of points. While the neighbors have had the benefit of the trees in the woods behind their home, it's not their property. This is Stellows' property, and my clients have the right to develop their property, provided they comply with the ordinances or the variance without being requested. I would also comment that we were really hoping to get a thank you tonight, because we pulled everything out of the, out of the right of way, and we are now not going forward with the discontinuance, and instead we still get the same pushback, where our homes are further away than what was originally proposed than what you folks approved back in, for the first round. We moved the homes back away from the neighbors, and we still get the opposition. There were a number of planning board questions. There were questions about the slope and the utilities that would be servicing this site. Dan Flores is a professional engineer of FFC Engineering. I am sure that if there are any slope issues with respect to sewer, or water, or gas, force means can address that, engineers can address those concerns. Those are planning board concerns, I'm not too worried about this. There's big concerns about runoff. If you look at the plan, the wetland area is to the south of all the properties, coming off of Main Street. We have a slope downhill toward Daniel Webster. I have done title on this Two Oldfield and the land next to Two Oldfield, and I can assure you that none of the neighbors draining onto the Stellows' property have any easement rights to do so. Their water just sheds, not supposed to, but it just sheds naturally. And so we could object to that, but we're not. And again, the engineering of this plan for the planning board can address any runoff or water issues. The layout of these homes aren't necessarily the final layout. We're here for four units on the two combined lots. If we have to move a lot forward, number two, if we move that forward a little bit, we'll be doing that with the planning board. So again, we're not too concerned about that. This board has plenty of experience with respect to property values and new construction. It's our general experience that when you add new construction to a neighborhood, especially with homes of, kind of older, homes that have been there for many years. I grew up in South Nashua, and most of these homes are the neighbors that have been there for, as long as I can remember, right? And finally, with respect to the noise, my wife and I bought a condo in Manchester about seven or eight years ago. We're right on the Merrimack River, it's wonderful. We open the slider door, and we hear the highway across the river. And we knew without buying. It's no surprise. I would expect the same for any buyers here. They know where they're buying, they know Main Street, they know Daniel Webster, Route 3 is right there. No surprise to any buyer for these units. And again, we see this as a very viable project on an acre and a half, four units, much lower than any density required. So we are looking for, looking for the board's support with respect to this application.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any questions?
Question from Mr.?
Attorney Prohm, so there was just one comment made about the 40-foot buffer, and could you explain to us, in your experience and what you see as, what can and cannot be done in a 40-foot buffer? You have a home right up against the buffer, but what can a homeowner do or not do in that buffer?
Well, I believe a homeowner can walk around in the buffer, can, you know, play catch with a kid in the buffer, but no structures, no building, no decks, anything like that into the buffer. That's why I say, and again, these are gonna be condominium units. People buying them are gonna know what they get. And again, if we have to shift that one particular, maybe two of them, have to shift them forward a little bit, we have enough room on the site. So, you know, they're gonna get used as a backyard, a little, probably, right? But it's, we're not here for any wetland permitting, no structures, no sheds in the backyard, no, I don't know, tetherball, make them whatever, trying to think of things we've put in backyards. But, you know, we really can't put anything in there, but you can passively use it.
And then, again, just for everybody here, if we were to approve this, it goes to the planning board. At that stage, though, again, the engineering is very specific, and all the issues with water runoff and, you know, questions about what liabilities are out with water and all that, again, that's specifically addressed there, and that's an extensive review, that's not just something that's glossed over, correct?
No, no, no. So the engineer, you heard Dan say that the wetland has been delineated. And then from there, the engineering teams, they make sure that the site's gonna work and not, not flow into the wetland areas. So there will have to be some stormwater detention or retention areas on the site out of the wetland buffer. And that could be any number of things, that could be under asphalt, that could be a little garden retention areas, right? So all that gets designed into a full plant set with the planning board.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thanks. Okay, now, one, and only one person with questions, concerns, or opposition may come up and speak to what Attorney Prohm rebutted. It's optional, you don't have to?
Thank you, please. This is the full time. Cliff Banner, 459 South Main Street, Nashville, New Hampshire. I'm one of the, one of the abutters. We also have a third abutter here, the Dr. Vermette, and he's the trustee for the, for doctor, for his father's, Dr. Vermette's property. My concern is the feasibility, and we do not know what these homes are gonna be. We're not gonna know how tall they are, we're not gonna know if they're gonna be at the level of Oldfield Road or not. But with the current drawing, the way the current drawing is set out here, there is no way, Mr., the engineer, there's no way you can do this building without impacting either by an embankment that slopes, or a vertical embankment on piles to, to get this close to the buffer, to the wetlands buffer. The current building, number two, that was one- The current building, number two, that was one in the back of the, of the current Stellus residence, is 25 to 30 feet below Old Field Road at the, at the, at the buffer. So that hasn't been addressed. Planning board's going to handle it, but these are serious questions. The rushing water, it's a video showing all the annual runoff that's occurring and during heavy storms. We're talking about drainage from Route three and from Daniel Webster. And currently, building number two is set from the, is blocked, the stream itself, the Hartwell Brook stream, is blocked by maybe a three-foot density of riprap. The, there are so many questions we have that, that are going to affect the wetlands. Wildlife, we have deer, bear, blue heron, most songbirds from the property. The lot size was talked about very briefly. Our lots are very large. This is urban, cramping four homes where one or two would have satisfied it. But the planning board's going to have some very serious issues with the, with the design of how these buildings are not going to be sitting 30 feet below our property when they're down close to the wetland buffer. There's that much slope. You need to, need to take a look at that. Also, Mr. Flores, there was a mention on the map about a survey done this summer. Was that a paper survey or a physical survey? Do we know?
Physical survey.
Physical? Okay. And all I can do is reinforce the, the importance of you seeing this, this wetland down there. It looks like a little tiny stream during the dry part of the summer, but it's a, it's that goes all the way down South Main Street, crosses over just south of the Sunset High School, and goes into that neighborhood on the other side of, of that, eventually draining into the, into the Merrimack. So it's a, it's a serious issue that even on our current yards, our yards on our side of Old Field Road, they're wet. They're wet for a lot of the year. I guess that's about it. Any other comments? Okay. That's, I guess that's all I can say. Please take us seriously before you make your vote because you're, you're turning a large lot neighborhood into a very, very dense with four homes. It doesn't make any sense. It, it does change the character of our, of our property, and we see it as negative.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
At this point, I'll close the public hearing and open the public meeting. And again, Mr. Patry and Mr. Sylvia will be voting on this one. Let's see. Who do we start with? Let's start with Ms. Flores.
There is so much opposition here. It's like I'm really on the fence myself. I'd like to hear what my colleagues have to say.
Mr. Patry.
So I certainly don't want to discount all the concerns and all the issues the planning board would have to deal with, but I, but in my view, looking strictly at the variance requirements, I, I think the application beats them specifically for the variance.
Mr. Sylvia.
I'm in support of the variance. It appears that the variance is directed toward density. And if we look at the, the plan here, what's said is the maximum density per acre is six units, and this would be 2.6 units. So it's not exceeding the recommended density for the area. I will take their word for it with the, the neighbor's word for it for the water, but the applicant said that they would be willing to look into stormwater retention, so that could address that. And some of the things that were mentioned, I don't know if they're pertinent or not, so I don't think they should be taken into account, things like the, the noise on the highway. That's not related to this variance. Backyard, that's not related to this variance. They're outside of the wetland buffer, so we don't need to really address that. If, if we did, it'd need to be go to Conscom first, I'd assume. So from what I've heard, I support this variance request.
Mr. Neely.
Yeah, I, I supported this the first time, and I'm, I'm going to support it again. I think this is a really creative use of this property. The, the applicant said that this will be less density and more open space than required. Once again, this reminds me of Buck Meadow Road, where they kind of built around a little pond there. The houses are a little close to each other, but they maximize the open space. You know, I take a look at this, while these are right on the, the line for the wetland buffers, that's the buffer. It's not the wetlands themselves that it's in. So there's, there's room to move around there. They did a great job with the side, the front and side setbacks to the, to the neighbors. As, as Attorney Prohlman said, I, I kind of agree with them. The fact they moved it further away from the neighbors, they should take that as, as a positive. So I am in favor of this application.
Thank you.
Can I have one more?
Yep. Also, it appears that the L lot seems like it's a difficult lot in itself, which establishes a hardship. So another reason why I'd support this.
Thank you. Mr. Prohlman.
I also support the application the first time and support it again for all those reasons I did then, and also echoing those in favor right now. Again, you know, the variance is for, for principal structures on a lot, as, as indicated by Mr. Sylvia. It does meet that. In fact, it's under a lot of that criteria as far as the impact to the, to the, to the lot, to the new lot that will be there. Again, I don't want to take away from people who have lived there for a long time, their experiences. I know that that neighborhood has been changing a lot in the last, you know, five to 10 years. So again, I also believe and also know, having experienced other projects in the city that we've approved and I've seen happen, that again, I have full confidence in the applicant's use of experts in engineering, and, and I know that this would not go any further past the planning board without that. And if the planning board determines that this is, you know, that something's not right here, then it's not going to happen at that stage, or something different will happen less than what we've approved. But again, for those reasons, I, I feel that, again, it meets the criteria of the variance. So I'm going to support the application.
Thank you. Yeah, I also voted in favor of this the, the last time, and I don't, you know, it just looks like even a better plan to me this time. And I understand the concerns of the neighbors. A lot of these things are the purview of the planning board and the Conservation Commission, not the ZBA. So I, I don't see any reason to deny this variance. Somebody like to make a motion? Make a motion? Mr. Sylvia, thank you.
All right. In the matter of James K. Stellus, Revocable Trust Owner, Daniel M. Flores, P E S F C Engineering Partnership, Inc., applicant two and L, Old Field Road, Sheet A, Lots 270 and 322, requesting variance from Land Use Code Section 190-17B to exceed the maximum number of principal structures allowed per lot, one permitted for single-family detached units proposed, R I Zone Ward seven, rehearing. I move in favor of supporting the variance. Number one, the variance is needed to enable the applicant's proposed use of the property given the special conditions of the property, and the benefits sought by the applicant cannot be achieved by some other method reasonably feasible for the applicant to pursue other than the variance. The L lot is a difficult lot given the amount of wetlands area on it, and I believe the applicant has done the best that they can to balance the positioning of the buildings with the wetlands in the area from what I can tell. Two, it's within the spirit and intent of the ordinance. Again, as we mentioned, this does not meet the maximum density that would be allowed at this area. It's, it seems to be within the, similar to other houses in the area. I'm not sure if exactly it is, but it's close. Three, will not adversely affect the property values of the surrounding parcels. Again, I, I'm not sure why two houses would be any different than an empty lot in that particular area in regard to property values. Four, it's not contrary to public interest. We have heard that stormwater retention ponds will be placed in the area to address the stormwater runoff issues that the abutters have. And five, it does substantial justice. Before, this lot could not be used, and now it's, it's becoming used. The owner has the right to develop this lot as long as they do so appropriately.
Okay. Thank you. Any second? Mr. Patry, thank you. Any discussion of the motion? All those in favor?
Who's voting?
No, you're not.
Let's see. Mr. Patry and Mr. Sylvia are voting on this one. Mr. Patry, are you?
Oh, sorry. Yes.
That's unanimous. Congratulations. Your variance has been approved. Again, there's 30-day window of appeal. Please contact the planning department if you have any questions.
Thank you.
Moving on to case number four.
Oh, it's four. There's two on the L lot.
Five-minute break, please.
Two on the L lot. Where's this from? Ooh.
Everybody back? We'll get started. Restart. Case number four, owner Sam Katz, address 36 Granite Street, sheet 44, Lot 37, requesting variance from land use code section 190, Act 17, B, to allow two principal structures on one lot where only one is permitted. This is the RV zone, Ward 3. And we did hear this case before, and the Housing Appeals Board asked that we do it again. So, good evening, please give us your name and address and walk us through the application.
Good evening, board members. My name's Chris Sweneyarsky. I'm attorney representing Sam Katz. Excuse me. My address is at the law firm Divine Millimet, 111 Amherst Street, Manchester, New Hampshire. So as you know, we are here on a reversal and a remand from the Housing Appeals Board for a variance request that was denied at 36 Granite Street. That was back in September of 2023. I trust that the Board has read and is familiar with the order and has consulted with counsel on that. In essence, the Housing Appeals Board found that the Board's decision on criteria number one was not understandable, and that its decisions on criteria two, three, four, and five were not supported by any evidence and were in violation of the law. Subsequently, the Board, the HAB, the Housing Appeals Board, not this Board, ordered this Board to issue a new decision that is consistent with that order. We should be clear, this is not a new hearing. This is not a rehearing. There's no new evidence, there's no new testimony here. This is based solely on the certified record that this Board provided to the Housing Appeals Board. So it's not a do-over. Just to be clear, because I think something that you said may confuse people into thinking that it might be something that it's not.
I've never, this has never happened before, so, in my experience, so perhaps I stated it wrong.
Happens to me all the time, but I guess that's the nature of our job, I think. But, I understood, and I just, I think it's important to make that clear, and it'll save us all a lot of time, I think. So with that, as the HAB confirmed in that appeal, conclusory opinions that are stated in the decision are not going to stand up on appeal, and that's what they found was the, really the substance of the decision issued last time. Really, variances are not a discretionary yes or no, which it seemed like maybe that was the thought process going on in that last one. There is in fact a law with the five criteria, and there's a legal standard in evaluating those five criteria, and those things have to be followed, and that's the analysis that has to take place. So when we look at the five criteria for a variance and the evidence that we already have in this record that was provided to the court or the HAB, I think it's pretty clear, and I did provide some proposed findings of fact for the Board at the request of staff. Criteria one and two are typically taken together as a matter of law, and those are determining whether or not the variance is contrary to the public interest and whether the spirit of the ordinance is observed. And the Supreme Court of New Hampshire has interpreted those two criteria on a lot of occasions, dozens and dozens. It's well-settled law. The Board, really, in evaluating those, has to determine whether the variance alters the essential character of the locality and whether it deviates from the ordinance unduly and in a marked degree. Those are the Court's words. And the evidence in this record shows pretty clearly that it does not. If my client wanted to build these two structures and connect them with a breezeway, there would be no variance required here. So, hard to say that we have a violation undue and in a marked degree just because of a breezeway. This practically complies with the ordinance, it's a very minor deviation. Certainly doesn't rise to the standard of a marked degree, and it would be hard to show any evidence otherwise, because there isn't any. It defies logic and reason. Also, you know, if you're talking about the locality, the corner of Davis Street has a four-unit condominium. The neighborhood has many multifamily, whether they're condominium or apartments, I don't know, I don't think that's actually germane to the discussion, and we provided you in the initial application, and that is in your record, with a table showing those properties, showing their square footage, and showing the units. So that's the evidence you have for that criteria, showing that this is the character of the locality. Anyone could drive around the neighborhood and see that it's the character, but you have that evidence in the record. There is no other evidence to the contrary, because it's simply not true. So you have to follow the evidence that you have. That is the law. The third criteria, as you all know, is whether substantial justice would be done, and the law requires that to be a balancing of the harm in denying the variance, the harm to the applicant, versus the benefit in denying the variance to the general public. Here, there has never been any benefit articulated, and there's no evidence of any benefit in not allowing this variance. Every single other home that touches Davis Street uses Davis Street. This is the only home that does not get to enjoy the use, or sorry, Davis Court. This is the only home that is not using Davis Court. Every single other one, including the other two on Granite Street, are using it. They're using it for access, they're using it for parking. This proposal does not use it for parking, this is simply access to a lot that is oversized when comparing it to others in the neighborhood and underdeveloped when comparing it to the others in the neighborhood. My client is only trying to do what everyone, not everyone, but almost everyone else in the neighborhood has done. And again, evidence in the record matters, and we've provided you that evidence with the table that I discussed before, and the simple GPS map with the satellite overlay, you can see what this neighborhood is. Every lot on Davis Court is much more densely developed than this one. The majority of lots within the entire block are much more densely developed than this one. So, again, when you're looking at the evidence, it's a, it's a pretty easy conclusion to draw, and when you draw a conclusion based on the evidence, that's what the law requires. When you make conclusory determinations based on no evidence, that's what the law does not uphold, as is what happened in the appeal. The fourth criteria, as you all probably know, again, is whether or not property values will be diminished. So again, we look at the evidence. There's only one piece of evidence in the record, and that is a written expert opinion from someone who's been a real estate broker for just about 30 years, saying that property values would not be diminished. It's also kind of common sense, for the reasons we were discussing on the first three criteria, that the neighborhood is developed this way. It is a densely developed neighborhood. We actually meet the density requirements even with two structures. So, you take that evidence versus absolutely no evidence to the contrary, and the legal analysis points you to only one decision that can uphold and withstand an appeal, rather, and it's that property values would not be diminished by granting this variance. And then, the fifth criteria, as you know, is whether or not an undue hardship would result from literal enforcement of the variance. And it has to do with having some unique attribute to the property. I know in the past, there was discussion, and there's evidence in the record as to the uniqueness of the property, but you can look at the maps and see the uniqueness of the property, there's no denying it. There are precisely three properties on Granite Street that touch Davis Court. Two of those properties already use Davis Court. This is the only property that is at the dead end of Davis Court, and that is significant, because if you all remember, Davis Court goes straight and then takes a left, and from that left, it goes into my client's property. That's it. When this was laid out, it was designed for Davis Court to access that property. That's a matter of simply looking at your tax maps or any plan that shows the lot lines. It's the only property at that point. Yet, it is the only property that doesn't get to enjoy access and use of Davis Court, which is a public right-of-way. It's not a private road. And I know there was discussion about, you know, people like having it not used, and people like that there's, I think, six trees on it. That's not their right. This is the public right-of-way. It is not somebody's yard to enjoy, even though that might be how it's used now. It's public, and everybody on it has the right to use it, and every member of the public has the right to use it. It's not someone else's property. So, it is highly unreasonable to deny just one applicant and single one resident of the city of Nashua out for this unique treatment of not being able to use this street. And that's really all I have for you, but if you have any questions about the record or the application, or in fact, the process, if nobody's ever done this before, I'm happy to answer them to the best of my ability. Thank you.
Mr. Sylvia?
I wasn't on the board when this case first came, so please forgive me, this has already been said. On the plan here, it looks like the right-of-way on Davis Court you mentioned, it says there's a gravel area and two deciduous trees. Why weren't those removed on the plan, if those are going to be a drive, going to be used as a street again? Because right now, it looks like, just looking at the plan, those are, that's, that right-of-way is not currently being used. Is that correct, or?
That's correct.
Okay, so why were they, why were they just kept on the plan?
Why were they what?
The trees in the gravel area, why were they kept on the plan?
It's a plan showing the existing.
There's just, okay, it's not, not a proposed, what it would look like?
Oh, not, not impro, not proposed improvements, no.
Okay, so if you would like to remove the trees and the...
Yeah, the, the road would have to be improved to the city standards.
Okay.
And we would do that at our expense.
Okay. And the real estate agent said that the removal of the trees wouldn't impact the property values for the surrounding properties?
I don't believe the statement was specific to the removal of trees. The statement contemplated the entire proposal, but did not get into specific details of the proposal. That would be kind of a lot to ask, because it's hard to know at any given time what specific component of the proposal is somebody's concern. It is in fact, the criteria is granting the variance, not any specific one thing, but rather the entirety.
And, and why couldn't the driveway be extended from Granite Street for the property, the house that's already on the property?
There's a possibility that it could, although it would make a much less attractive development, and again, that's the whole point, is that there is no legal reason or way to deny one person use of a public road. Everybody else is using the public road, you cannot deny this person use of the public road.
Okay, thank you.
Your, your document talks a lot about density and units, but doesn't really talk about structures. This is, the other lots in this area don't have multiple structures on a single lot. They have a single structure with multiple units in it, and that's, the ordinance has considered those to be very different things. So what's being requested here is a second structure on a single lot with access through what's currently a, a paper road, and the last time this Board had this case, we said it would be perfectly reasonable to extend the existing house and add units to it. In fact, you even made a suggestion to, you know, use a breezeway to connect, and yeah, that would, that would be legal. But we're also talking about turning, you know, either turning a public road into, into a private driveway, or, or into a driveway, or, this is the first I've heard that you're actually talking about taking that dogleg of Davis Court and bringing it up to city standards. Has, is the city buying into this? You know, and I don't see any, usually there's something the fire department needs to know about, can they do a turnaround in there? I don't see that as a possibility.
That's all part of planning board review and not within the scope of the zoning board's jurisdiction. We're only applying for a variance for a second principal structure. It's certainly not the first time we discussed it, that has been the plan all along, and we discussed it in detail at the first hearing. I'm sure if we went through the minutes, we could see that. It's, it's not at all the first thing. Now, in terms of the style of the architecture, yes, as I said before, you, that's the difference, is that a connection of a breezeway, and that's what makes the findings unreasonable. The fact that just a breezeway is what it takes. We could do that, but, the problem is, now you're forcing a style on someone to make a less attractive development for no other reason, because all of the variance criteria are satisfied.
I could be difference of opinion on that. Thank you.
Well, but if, if I can further that a little bit, it's not an adequate reason to deny by saying, "We prefer something different that is in compliance."
Well, the, you know, part of the requirement is, "Benefit sought by the applicant cannot be achieved by some other method reasonably feasible for the applicant to pursue other than the variance." And the last time we...
That is not the state variance criteria in this state at this time. That's not true. I don't know who gave you that. That's wrong.
It's in, it's in every one of our, as, as what city staff tells us it is. And if you disagree, you can take it up with city staff, but that's what...
I took it up with the Housing Appeals Board, they disagreed too.
Well, that's...
If we're gonna do it again, we'll do it again until we get it right.
Yeah.
But you're using the wrong criteria. There is an alternate criteria, but we're not applying under that criteria. But I have to say, if the city is not going to respect the order of the Housing Appeals Board, and they're gonna follow a different way of thinking on the basis that this is what we've done and this is what our council have told us, then we will end up back there. But the, the Board's not gonna look favorably on that, and we'll be seeking our costs to do that at that point, because it's not fair.
My understanding is what the Board, the Housing Board said is, "We did not give specific enough reasons, and need to do it again with specific reasons if, if that's our decision."
Well, I gave you a copy of the order in the resubmission that you required.
I did read it.
So the word "reason" is not in the conclusion here. So no, I don't think it's about specific enough reasons. I know I heard people saying that, but no, I mean, if you look at the last page of the order, it tells you what you need to know.
The matter is remanded, "Prefer the proceedings before the Nashua zoning board of adjustment to provide meaningful findings of fact consistent with your order." Not your facts necessarily, but the facts that we find.
Mm-hmm.
Another question. So, that's what it says.
Consistent with the order.
Consistent.
So you gotta read the top three things on that page, and you have to understand them. That's the essence here.
Yeah.
It's not a do-over, it's not try again to come up with better reasons.
No, it is to better specify their reasons. Okay. Another question. Mr. Sylvia?
Given the particular nature of the lot, why not pursue a subdivision and make a new lot in the back there? That would avoid the issue as well.
A subdivision was denied by this Board, I think, 21 years ago.
Okay, before my time, so I didn't know that, thank you.
Mine too.
Any other board members? Mr. Neely?
Counselor, just a couple of questions. You had, had mentioned a few minutes ago that it looks like 30, 34 and 32 Granite Street are both using Davis Court already?
Yeah.
They are?
Yeah.
Okay, so, so that's new information loss, and I certainly didn't notice that on my drive-by, so I guess thank you for that information. And the second question is, that goes back to the discussion we had before. So, the breezeway, we'll go back to the breezeway here that we talked about at the beginning. So, so why not just attach this building, make it one large building? That would be consistent with what, everything else going on on this, on this block? Why not just do that?
So, because the only reason to do that i- is to comply. There's no other benefit, there's no real-world practical benefit, it's only a way to get around the variance process. And the whole point of this variance process is to allow for a reasonable development when there is a minor deviation from your ordinance. So what you're proposing is, don't do that minor deviation, instead do a less reasonable development, and that's not...
We consider this a major deviation.
It's really not, it's a breezeway.
Well, if I could...
Major or minor, those are subjective terms. You can say major, you can say minor. I'm answering the question. The reason is because it's a much more development, much more attractive to the community, which is a, a large part of the variance criteria. Those first three criteria that we talked about, that all has to do with the impact on the community. So how would it be that a, a giant structure with this breezeway connecting them is somehow better? It's not better, it simply is, you're, you're proposing it so that it doesn't come before this Board, so that it's in compliance, and I understand that, and, and I appreciate it, it is something we thought about as well, but it's, it's a pretty absurd way to do it, because it's going to be unattractive.
But most, from what I noticed right on driving around the neighborhood and taking a look at the pictures, most of the buildings around this block are all single, large buildings, many of them probably have three or four or whatever inside, and it makes sense to me that you'd want to continue that same, we're not, we're not trying to get you to go around it, I'm just saying, when I look at every other house on this block, they're all that large house that's subdivided. Why not just do the same thing?
Because it's less attractive, it's a, it's a less desirable development, that was done in the past, we're trying to do what is better now. It's the difference between garden-style apartments and townhouses. We're trying to do something better. You know, there, there's no rational argument that can say, remember our criteria here, that there's a benefit to having one larger building, so take the two buildings we want to do, connect them. What is the benefit to the community in doing that?
Another question? No, Mr. Sylvia?
Again, apologize if this has already been said in previous hearings, but why not an accessory dwelling versus a dwelling of similar size?
We're trying, we're, we're trying to do a principal structure to more utilize the land. An accessory dwelling is typically, I don't know your exact criteria, or, sorry, provisions, however, accessory dwellings are generally limited in size to a percentage of the primary dwelling, and they have to share certain things. We're not intending to do that, we want to create another unit of housing.
And you also mentioned "better," could you elaborate on that? Like, how, I know, I know you talked about it a little bit, could you just expand upon...
Well, I think the example I gave is the best. You compare a garden-style apartment versus two townhomes. It's, it's a more desirable living situation for most people. Not for everybody, there are always exceptions to every rule, but generally speaking, most people would prefer a townhouse or a single-family type of living arrangement rather than an apartment situation.
Do you have any statistics supporting that?
No, that, that's, I, I do not...
Anecdotal?
It's not something I prepared to research. I think it's something that most, it's a conclusion most people can get to, but if that type of research is something the Board would find helpful, I'm happy to get it for you.
Okay.
Say one thing, Mr. Foulton.
There's been some questions or discussion about just putting another structure in back of the existing house and connecting it by a breezeway. We would still consider that as two principal structures, just because you, if they were to add on, make a full addition and make it go from a single family to a two-family, that would be permitted, they could go, go straight to building permit with that. But just by having one structure in front and adding a new structure in the back, built decades apart from one another, connecting it by a, a simple breezeway, that doesn't make it one principal structure. As a matter of fact, we had a case on Orange Street in this general neighborhood...
So we'll call it more than a breezeway. See, what you're doing now is advocating for your personal position...
I'm just saying, I'm not saying one thing or the other.
So, the breezeway is an example. My point is, if the buildings are connected, no variance is required. Maybe it's not a breezeway, maybe we'll get it over the level that satisfies you to call it the same structure. But we don't need to mince words to talk about what I think we all understand, which is if the two housing units are connected, they're allowed, and if they're not, they need a variance.
I was just saying that if-
I know what you were saying.
Well, let Mr. Falk continue, please.
I'm just saying, simply, there's an existing house there. If someone wants to build another house right in back of it and connect it by a breezeway, a simple little breezeway, which to me is a three-season porch, something very simple, that does not make it one prin, that's gonna make it two principal structures-
So, here's the problem with this discussion. Mr. Falk, you're not a member of the zoning board, right?
I'm sorry?
You're not a member of the zoning board?
No, I'm not. Just City Staff.
And you're not the code enforcement officer?
I'm sorry?
You're not the code enforcement officer?
No.
But yet, you're advocating for an interpretation of the zoning ordinance?
I'm not advocating for anything. All I'm saying, I'm just describing a difference with what was discussed here. Sometimes the board may come up with some things, and I may give insight to what we have seen in the past.
That may be it.
All I'm telling everybody is that we had a house on Orange Street, that they wanted to connect it with a carriage house with a simple little breezeway in the, between them, and the courts found that it was still not one principal structure. That's all I'm saying. Not advocating for anything here.
Yeah, he's just providing information for us.
Mr. Patrick.
Yeah, no, I think I'll leave it. We're just listening to guidance from City Staff, so I think that's, I don't think he's testifying or advocating.
With all due respect, I think there's a lot more to it. And if you all had actually read the proceedings before the Housing Appeals Board, you'd realize that's not exactly what's going on here. But we can move on with the agreement that, yes, some people may interpret that a breezeway is not enough to call it one structure. It may have to be a more substantial connection. The distinction is not actually relevant to the argument because, like I said, the bottom line here is that two housing units connected are one structure, however substantial that connection has to be to get there. And if they're detached, they are two structures. We are seeking a variance to have them detached. The distinction is not really relevant to that argument. That's a matter of the specific architectural design, which we're not talking about here.
Well, there's another part to this, is that I'm assuming, or the desire is to, basically, to finish Davis Court, and there would be a driveway to this second unit-
Yes.
From Davis Court? Okay, so that requires a variance that has not been applied for.
That requires a variance?
Yes.
From what provision?
Would be a second curb cut and possibly driveway width variance.
We haven't seen any plans for any-
Haven't seen any plans, but that's-
They can't exceed 24 feet.
No. I don't know what-
I don't know what the existing one is and what the proposed one is. I don't think we ever saw that.
But that would be a requirement. But yeah, I think, for me, the sticking point is the second structure, which is not something that's found in that neighborhood. And it's not something that this board typically permits in this, with this small a lot that's not being developed as a, like, we've had this previous case.
But those aren't the variance criteria. This is what caused the problem last time. We have to look at the variance criteria. So, what is the benefit to the community in having one structure instead of two?
Well, it's also, there's also the issue of Davis Court, but, all right. So, let's, anybody else with comments? Because I think we need to get on with other testimony. No? Okay.
It's not really open to other testimony. This is not a do-over.
Do I, do I get?
I mean, you're teeing this up.
Our staff had a meeting with our city council, and he suggested that this be a rehearing. You hear everything all over, so everybody can hear all the testimony, and the board can discuss everything in favor or in opposition to this again. That's what I was told by our staff.
I can only tell you what I think, but you make your own decisions.
That's what I was told by-
We can do it all over again.
Further proceedings, and that was determined that was additional testimony. Further testimony from the public. That's what our staff has been told.
So, all right?
Okay.
Continue. I think we have a seat. Does anybody wish to speak in favor of this application? Any? We do have several letters of objection. I don't know whether any of the people are here. We have one from Donovan Patar and Emma Lee. Here? Okay. We have one from Linda Willett. We have one from Fernando Zapata and Lita Zapata. Okay, they're here. We have one from Elizabeth Wilson. Not here. We have one from Catherine Cogswell, and she's here. Okay. So, I didn't hear anybody in favor of the application, so anybody with questions, concerns, or opposition? Sir, come up and give your name and address, and you have five minutes.
Thank you. Good evening, everyone. I'm Donovan Patar of Six Davis Court, and I'm here to provide some information that was conveniently left out by this gentleman here. We need to first examine the neighboring houses immediately. I've taken liberty to start drawing a diagram. I live in Six Davis Court, which is at the end of the court. When I purchased the house in January of this year, I moved from Los Angeles, and I intend on living in an area where we're able to preserve the aspects of it that it's today. So, you have Six Davis Court, Four Davis Court, and then Two Davis Court, all of which are single-family residences on a single plot owned and lived in by the owners. I'm six at the very end. You could say that the end currently is a cul-de-sac because there is no through-traffic. Sure, there is the granite state properties here and here, if you're able to see. Yes, there is a footpath access. No real car traffic. I do believe that the granite state property here has a small little gravel path for the, when they have an occasion or something, they might have a cargo. There's no traffic. When I bought the house, it's a cul-de-sac. This lot right here, which is the proposed private driveway for this new residence, is actually filled with 35 trees. It's quite wonderful. It's filled with a lot of life. You can go outside in the summer and hear the birds and the insects. There's over a foot of leaves. No one's using it as a park. We just enjoy it because it provides nature, and it's part of the ecosystem on Davis Court. What's important to note is Davis Court is a historic street. Two and Four are historic houses. Six was built in 1941 by an architect who owned Four Davis Court and went to meticulous detail to ensure that the residence at Six Davis Court is preserving the historic flair of that street. If you go down that street, it's a very quiet street. You'll hear birds. You'll hear a lot of life. Very different than the rest of Nashua. That's what the characteristic of Davis Court is. And that's why my wife and I bought it. So, of course, the value's gonna go down. You're telling me that something that's a forest right now is gonna be replaced with a new road? 30, over 35 trees? These are large trees. So, we're saying that Nashua's gonna have to pay taxpayers to actually change this? Maybe they even said they're gonna pay it. But how do you know that the roots, when you go to go pull those trees, aren't gonna be affected by the property? Those are large trees bordering my property. Furthermore, what's important to note about the characteristic of the neighborhood is everyone has a nice backyard, and all the backyards face together. My house is right here. The new proposed house would be right here, which is really important to note because you're telling me that not only am I gonna lose side of forest, you're gonna increase-
It's not your forest.
It's not my forest. It's a side of forest. Thank you for interrupting me. I'm glad, I'm glad that you interrupted me, sir. So, what you're proposing, though, is that the back of my house is the front of the new house. I'm going to be losing privacy because no longer my backyard is going to become their front yard. And furthermore, you're going to double the number of through-traffic here, reducing the value of my house. It's no longer a cul-de-sac. My backyard's gonna be the only backyard where you can look outside and see the new house. Yes, sir?
Are we had questions yet, or?
Interrupt me anytime. That's, I mean, I'm trying to make sure we dispel the idea that there's a couple of trees here and that this is a used road.
Give him two more minutes, and then we can have questions.
So, we're talking about completely changing it, so it'll definitely impact the value of my house. No longer on a cul-de-sac, no longer a quiet corner, and I'm now gonna have to have all the construction in here, and I'm losing privacy in my house because now, when I'm gonna go look out my backyard, I'm gonna see another house there. And so, it's important to note that you're not preserving the character of the neighborhood. You are negatively impacting the value of the house. I'm no longer gonna have a cul-de-sac, and we're going to be changing it. And so, the fact that they completely avoided talking about all of the counterpoints, I wasn't here for that, and I'm really sorry. I would've happily brought them up before.
Please speak to the chair.
So, I'm very happy to say, though, that for these reasons, we do strongly oppose it at Six Davis Court. So, questions?
Hey, Mr. Sylvia.
I have several. One, that's a right-of-way, it's a public right-of-way, not a park, correct?
Correct.
So, it's not owned by you or anybody else? It's for cars? Even though it hasn't been used for cars, it's for cars?
It, that, it could be used for cars if you were to remove all the brush to the trees. Yes.
Okay. If the applicant put in trees as a buffer on their property line with your property line, could that have a similar impact, the trees that are there now? Could it maintain the same character if they put in trees?
If they put in trees, so you'd have to actually, the width of this, of this lot here, you'd have to go and do the survey to determine whether or not those trees would be there? That's a very narrow strip. And so, I'm gonna say putting trees there to preserve the character won't be possible due to the regulations of how the road needs to be constructed to meet city standards.
Could they be replaced in some other way? Could you put trees on the edge of your property to recreate the character?
Could I be putting trees at the edge of my property to recreate that? You could add trees, yeah. I mean, I could make my whole backyard trees, right? Sure, but I, we're not here to talk about planting a whole bunch of trees in that area.
It's, well, it's a street, so.
I mean, I just, you're saying, you're, correct, sir? You were saying planting trees in my-
Yeah, because it seems like you're concerned about the loss of the trees there, but that could be-
I'm concerned about the loss of the privacy and the loss of it being a cul-de-sac.
Okay, well, if there's issues with privacy, would the installation of a fence impact that? Could that adjudicate that issue?
If you're saying that they put a high enough fence, and they're able to make it that you can't see it, I'm unable to say that because the height of the house there, right? And the geometry of it looking in, are they gonna be suddenly looking into my backyard, looking into my kitchen, looking into my bedroom? I'm unable to say that without, like, three-dimensional drawings to do that, so I'm gonna say no.
Well, the maximum, we can force them to do a six without another variance, six feet. But, and also, you mentioned that there'd be more traffic there. I mean, who else would go down that street?
Oh, good question. I mean, you have garbage, mailman, package, delivery, fire trucks, any really utility service that would be required to go down there. Would have to be going down there.
What if they put the mailbox at the very edge of that?
So, if they made this their private driveway?
There are mailboxes that are not right next to property.
What about, what about the, what about the packages? What about the packages? What about deliveries and those type of things? So, I would say that you could put a mailbox there, and it would make it great for the mailperson, for sure.
That happens in a lot.
What about Amazon packages and everything else?
Happens in a lot of places, so.
Any other board members with questions for this gentleman? No? Okay. Thanks.
Thank you.
Okay, next.
Catherine Cogswell, 32 Granite Street. I do have a couple of pictures of those few trees, if you'd like to look at them. I have probably a million reasons why I would like to see this-
Please, please speak into the microphone.
I have probably a million reasons why I'd like to see this variance refused, but-
Name and address.
I gave it to him. 32 Granite Street.
Thank you.
Starting to feel like this, Mr. Katz is harassing me. This is the fourth time in so many, so many years. But anyhow, I'm gonna stick to one thing. In this variance request, it said that the neighborhood has a varied multiple, multitude of multifamily houses. I think this to be misleading. There are 11 houses on the end of Granite Street, because Granite Street is a two-parter, where I live. There are 11 houses. They each are on one lot. Some of them are big lots, many with backyards, large backyards like mine, and large side yards. Four have two units. One has four. All but two are resided in by the owner, or the owner resides on the street. So, the fact that this makes it sound like it's a multi, multi-fold city, inner-city density is bull. That's all I get to say.
Any questions from the board? Mr. Neely.
There was some testimony earlier that there are cars using, going up Davis Court to access, actually, your property. Are you parking cars back there?
No. I park out front in my cobblestone driveway.
Is, so cars cannot access your property from the back? Was there, like, some brush or something? Was there some way that cars could knock it into your, from Davis Court?
No, they could get into my yard.
Oh, they can?
And I have gone in. If I've got a load of mulch coming in or whatever, but it's not a, it's not a throughway. I do not, I mean, I never looked at my backyard as a, as a underutilized hardship and thought, "God, I gotta fill that backyard up with something. I think I'll build a house or put a road in," or whatever the hell. But, yeah, I do have access to Davis Court.
And just to confirm, just to confirm what you were just testifying to, so Granite Street has many different residences on that street that are multifamily, correct?
There are about five multifamily. The rest are single-family owned-
Five out of how many, approximately?
11.
Five out of 11? So, 40 percent. Okay. Thank you.
Okay.
Mr. Sylvia.
Yeah, and I apologize, I- Sorry. I know you didn't mention this, the previous person mentioned this, but maybe you could shed some light on this. There was some talk about the historical nature of this street. Is this in the historical district? I don't believe it is, but I just wanted to double check.
We're on the other side.
Yeah, I thought it was on the other side of Congress Street.
But we have houses that have been there for, Steve, how long has your family's house been? 1845. His family has lived there consistently, over 100 years.
So, are there any restrictions in that area for building things, or is that just across Congress Street?
I don't understand the question.
Is it in, is it in the historic district? No, okay.
No. We're not historic.
Thank you.
But it has a character, all of its own. Anybody else? I could go on for days. I've been living there for, like, 40-plus years, so I just hate, I hate to see change, unnecessary change.
Okay, anybody else in the audience with questions, concerns, or opposition? Please state your name and address, and you have five minutes.
Linda Willett, Four Davis Court. I think one of the things is the misrepresentation of the character of the neighborhood. Even the multifamily that's just come up, that issue, they're mostly owner-occupied. And in a couple of instances, it's the family that lives upstairs. It's not, this hasn't been purchased for maximizing what you can get out of a lot and the building. It's where owners, I've lived there 56 years. My neighbor has lived there almost 40 years. It's a quiet area. To talk about the public interest, I think it really is in the public, broader public interest that we keep neighborhoods this close to the inner city intact. It's very difficult at times to live in the inner city, and I think you can all see that where there are multifamily houses on small lots or broken up, broken up properties, that it's not in the best interest of the inner city. We're only two blocks from downtown. It's a good place to live. It has its downsides in that everyone turns around in our drives, driveways. We put up with it. It's, it's how it is. But to make the argument that this has any greater hardship than any house on a big lot seems to me incorrect. Cogswells have a big lot. Wilsons have big lots. There are a lot of big lots on Granite Street. In suburban neighborhoods, there are big lots. That doesn't mean that the property is underutilized or has any hardship. It means they have a big lot. I just don't see the difference here that creates any hardship. The property can be developed. It can be kept in the character of the neighborhood by creating a separate unit. And I think it's in the best interest, public interest, to have that happen. The, uh, so there are no really special conditions. If, if you were on a corner lot and you had a, a corner lot that had access to another street, that's not a special hardship that makes it necessary for you to, uh, have two buildings on one lot. The, uh, uh, on balance, the, the benefit is to keeping, um, this, this neighborhood and other neighborhoods in the inner city intact and not, not having them be, not having the zoning change. When you buy into an older neighborhood, you expect the zoning, um, to, to protect you. And that having, developers want to create, um, more financial, uh, benefit or more financial value. Uh, if this is only decide, decided for financial value, um, it's just not fair to, it, it will diminish our properties because it will diminish the character of our, our neighborhood. I think that's the, the biggest thing, that, that the, I'm not sure of the definition of substantial justice, but I think that substantial justice is served by, uh, maintaining our faith in the zoning and feeling secure, um, that where we live is protected by zoning laws that will only be changed if there is a true hardship on a property. And I don't believe that that's the case here. And I hope you'll so, we've been going through this since two thousand and five. And so I hope you'll all, um, uh, hold, uphold what your predecessors have found and, uh, keep the neighborhood as it is. Thank you.
Any questions from the board? Okay, thanks. Anybody else, excuse me, anybody else in the audience with questions, concerns, or opposition? Okay, uh, we have a letter from Elizabeth Wilson. She's not here, right? It's a rather long letter, so I'm not going to, uh, read the whole thing. It will be entered into the, uh, record of this case. And she says she's updating a letter she sent the last time. It discusses, uh, some of the reasoning given in two thousand and five, when I, I was not on the board. And, uh, she says, "Based on the following points, I believe this variance should again be denied. One person's financial gain from sole use of public land, first responders' handicap with emergency access, potential loss of life and property, visual nonconformity to the other structures in the historic section of the city." And, uh, it's rather complicated, but, um, it will be in the public record. Uh, so, now, uh, Counselor has, uh, five minutes to rebut the, uh, comments that are made. And please, uh, stick to the topics that were raised by the objectors.
Absolutely. Thank you for the five minutes. So, as I started talking about earlier, and as the appeal order instructed the board, the decision has to be based on evidence, not conclusory claims by layperson. So let's go through some of the falsehoods and inaccuracies that were just stated. Let's start out with living in California in two thousand and twenty-three. You have no standing in this case. That's why you're not supposed to have opened this back up. Because people who live here now, but didn't live here when this were decided, no standing in court whatsoever. This is not a new case. Bring it to court, you'll see. Uh, second, not a private driveway. We just talked about how this is a public road, not a private driveway. This is not an ecosystem. I don't even know how this public road could be an ecosystem. They might call it that somewhere else, they don't call it that here. It's not a forest, you all have seen it. It's not historic. There is not one house on this street in the National Register of Historic Places. This is not in the historic district. There is not one house on this street that has any historic protection. Calling, just because something is old does not make it historic. We have many, many buildings that are a hundred years old. They are not historic, they don't have any historic protection. Um, the idea that nobody's using the other homes on Granite Street for anything else, I think if you were to drive by one of those right now, you'd see two cars parked there, because I saw them there. If you were to look, you will see the well-beaten path of tire tracks going straight from Davis Court into those properties. So you don't have to take my word for it, you can just go look at it, but the lying is a little bit obnoxious. Something that we've discussed already today. Nobody here has the right to privacy at the expense of someone else's property. You can't force someone else to keep trees on their property, uh, because they give you privacy. Now, if you say, oh, this road isn't used, okay, well, here's what happens. You have a public right-of-way, so the city actually has to clear those trees out, because it's a public right-of-way. Or the city can abandon the right-of-way, and then the property would revert to the owners on both sides. Then the owners could cut the trees down. So nobody has any real legal rights to those trees, that's a falsehood. I know people come before zoning boards all the time, I've been on my zoning board, I know, expecting that the, the community has to provide their privacy and, and their comfort. It doesn't work that way in America. People have property rights. That much is clear. Now, um, again, thirty-two Granite Street, pretty sure there are cars parked there right now, have been for a while.
Excuse me, ma'am, let her, let him speak.
I have some pictures. All right, we'll, we'll show you later. Uh, Four Davis Court, this whole discussion, you all are familiar with what Four Davis Court is, right? You've seen that property? The entire property is covered with a four-unit condominium. Or maybe it's multifamily, I don't know the ownership, I'm sorry, I'm pretty sure that's not relevant. To start talking about the character of the neighborhood, um, oh, sorry, not, I'm sorry, not Four Davis Court, One Davis Court, I'm sorry. But to start talking about the character of the neighborhood when that is on your street, it, it's, it's disingenuous at best. We all know what the street is. We can say whatever words we want. But the reality is, you have this in that neighborhood. The only difference, as we've talked about, is that the buildings are connected. And at law, you've got to determine how connected buildings are somehow the big breaking point that makes this absolutely have to be connected in order for the community to be saved. And I just don't see how you can rationally do that. That's all I have to answer the issues that were raised. Thank you.
Okay, Mr. Sylvia?
Could you, could you, yeah, could you say that privacy might be connected to the public interest or property values of the surrounding properties?
Sorry, could you repeat that?
Yeah, you, you said that privacy has no impact on the surrounding properties. Wouldn't that potentially impact their property values or the public interest of the neighborhood?
No, I, I didn't say privacy has no impact on property values. But what you have to understand is that granting the variance does not have any effect on privacy. There is no right to privacy with the variance or without it. So you have to understand pretty clearly how this works. It's whether granting the variance has an impact on property values. So you have to articulate how having the buildings connected does not impact property values, having them separated does.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions from the board?
Thank you.
Okay, now, excuse me, one and only one person with questions, concerns, or opposition has five minutes to rebut if they wish. Again, uh, give your name and address for the, for the record.
Linda Willett, Four Davis Court. I, I would argue with the definition of historic, but that's another whole thing. It doesn't have to be protected to be historic, to be historic. And the, if, uh, having two units, two, two buildings on one lot, depends on the argument of whether or not they can be connected. That could be true of, I don't know how many, but lots of lots in the city, right? There's no, there's no hardship. I mean, anybody with a large lot that wants two buildings on the lot, um, has the same criteria. Like, this lot doesn't have any more hardship than any other lot, just because, uh, undeveloped street, dead ends at one of the borders. That, that doesn't create, that doesn't mean that there's a hardship on this lot that requires a variance to, to put two buildings. And other people, these other people that have backyards that back up to Davis Court can be in here too, asking for variance, variances, claiming hardship. It, it just doesn't seem reasonable that hardship, um, I, I, I just can't see where there's any hardship on the lot, greater than any other, than any other lot. And also the access, and when you were talking to other people, some of this is planning board and the street department and their problem. But are there other areas where, uh, a street goes in and doglegs to become someone's driveway and ends at the driveway? What, what happens to what is currently, that's why there are tire tracks. A lot of those tire tracks are because we all use Amazon, there are all kinds of cars. They pull in there, they back up, and they turn around. And that's the only, uh, non, non-owner, uh, way of turning around. It's a city, city undeveloped street. And that's what it's, that's the purpose it serves, and it should continue to serve that purpose, it, it seems to me. Again, uh, I, I don't think that hardship has been established, which seems to be, uh, a really significant issue in this. And I will continue to argue that keeping, uh, inner-city neighborhood intact is in the public interest and that there's no public interest to be served by, by doing this. And creating, uh, another house there is not going to increase our property, uh, values. That, the argument that was first stated by that Realtor seemed to be that they would build a better house than our houses and thereby increase the value of our properties, which seems like kind of a specious or insulting kind of argument, that, that our houses only sell for this much, but if they build a house, then we're all going to get more money for our houses, which we're not really looking for anyway. Thank you.
So I will now close the public hearing and open the public meeting. And for this case, uh, Mr. Patry and Ms. Bures will be voting. Mr. Sylvia?
I'm not voting, but I have some comments here. So, looking at the, uh, variance request, it's only about two principal structures on one lot. So some of the things that were mentioned, um, in the public hearing, I feel are not pertinent, including the historic nature of the street. I don't know what that has to do with, uh, two, uh, buildings on one lot. I also don't know about the, the street itself. It's, it is a street, from what I understand. So the butters don't have any right to say what does or doesn't happen on that street. Although, uh, I also don't see the hardship. Uh, I, I believe that it seems like there could be other options on how the applicant could get what they want through other means. I, I don't know what happened twenty-one years ago with the subdivision, but I feel that that would be perfectly appropriate here. Or having another, uh, building that's not a principal building, but a accessory dwelling. That seems like that could possibly work too. So I don't see the hardship in this, and if I did vote, I would vote no. But if the applicant voted, uh, asked to table it, I would support that. And if they came back with something that could work, I might be able to support that.
Mr. Neely?
So, 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 uh, good points by, by Mr. Sylvia. You know, when this, this case, uh, came up the last time, I wasn't, also wasn't here two thousand and five. I, I, I found it very fascinating. Uh, it was the first time I got to go down Davis Street, uh, really, really cool neighborhood. And I remember making a comment that I, I never would have, have thought this neighborhood existed, uh, like that. Uh, but, you know, the applicant brings up a good point, and, and the housing board, you know, brought up a, a good point. We need to, um, really not concentrate on Davis Street. What we need to concentrate on is, um, is, is the request to allow two principal structures on the one lot. So, you know, we all, we all know on this board, we have a lot of folks who, who get very passionate about, about, about things. And, um, and they, uh, think about their property specifically. We, we do need to keep in, in mind that, that, um, you know, it's, it's our job to sift through the criteria. So when we talk about the trees getting, getting taken down on somebody else's property or, um, things along those lines, we, we have to kind of, while people don't want to hear that, we have to kind of look around that a little bit, pay attention to the specific reasons that, what, why we are here. I, I do not see any specific reason or hardship, um, of why there needs to be two buildings on this property. When I look at this block specifically, so Concord, uh, to Laton, to Granite, to Summer Street, with Davis Court kind of in the middle there, all of these, uh, lots appear to have, um, one principal structure, and it may have, like, have a barn or something, uh, back there, but they're all, one principal structure, they're all look like oversized lots. That is the consistency to what I see in this neighborhood. And I do not see the reason to add a second structure. When we, when we talk about, once again, as Mr. Sylvia was talking about, is there another method reasonably feasible? We had, had discussed it with the applicant of, of why not just build onto the principal structure? And it was more about aesthetics and, and, um, and what a buyer may, may or may not want. I do appreciate the, um, the fact that the applicant, uh, gave us, uh, documentation from a Realtor, uh, talking about the property values. And, and I do have to take that into account. You know, folks are always going to say, oh, I think my property value is going to go down, I think they're going to go up. We can't go by that, we did get documentation, so, so kudos to the, to the applicant for having that. But I, but I do feel that this is, is failing, uh, the, the first criteria. And therefore, it's probably failing the fourth one as well, uh, because I do believe it's contrary to the public interest of that block specifically. Uh, that whole neighborhood is, is consistently large, oversized lots with a single structure on, on those, um, properties. So, so I, I would, uh, vote against this.
Mr. Boucher?
Uh, we're, we're, we're volunteers, we're lay, laypeople, we're not, uh, lawyers. So, uh, I will admit myself that I don't have the legal expertise. I wish Mr. Menkaren was here tonight and could give us a little guidance. But, uh, again, uh, we have to do the best that we can do, uh, in light of this. So, uh, I did, like, like we all do. Uh, I know I go over several times the material we get, so, and sometimes I have to go over several times to try to absorb it. So my takeaway was from this, um, uh, this order, or this, 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 this conclusion, decision, I've been on the board long enough to have experienced a few times where we've had a decision, uh, through Superior Court, where the judge says you are to approve this, period. This is not, to me, this is not, me personally, my opinion, this is not science. This is, I think, I, I just want to put it out there that I think that we're doing, uh, I believe that what was kind of stated in our position is what we, we should be doing. And, and again, we're laypeople, and if this is not, doesn't work out, then the, then the applicant and the butters have their, their means for re, for, you know, to go, go back at this. But, so that's what I'm going by. As far as this case goes, again, it's, 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 um, I think kind of equating what you were kind of, from, uh, Mr. Neely, is, is looking at the, where we're at, where we're situated, what's going on in that neighborhood and, and the, the character of the neighborhood. And again, looking at it from my, my point of view, um, I, I, I guess I don't, I, I don't see it. I, I know there's a street there, but I, I'm not just focusing on that street. Because certainly, um, you know, any argument can be made. The city could go in there, they could cut all the trees out and pave it, okay? Uh, but that's not, that's not what's happened there. And so whether or not that is, uh, for or against this application, it's not really my focus. My focus is on really, um, the character of the neighborhood and, and what exists currently in that, in that neighborhood. So, uh, right now... So, right now, I'm, I'm honestly inclined to continue with, with my initial feeling of, of not, not supporting this application.
Mr. Patry.
I'm, I'm also opposed. I mean, I just don't think that number one is met. I, you know, I, I don't think that the benefit can be achieved by some other means, I don't, I think there are some other options they can pursue, and, I just, I don't, I don't think that we, you know, I, I don't think it's needed to, to enable the use of the property. So, I'm, I'm a no, because of those reasons are number one, and, and obviously we have to approve all five, so I don't, I don't feel like I need to get, get to, you know, my reasons on the other criteria as well.
Ms. Boras.
I agree, I'm also not in favor for the same reasons already stated.
I, I come down to, you know, looking at, at the, one of the rules, the criteria here is within spirit and intent of the ordinance. And the ordinance is very clear that about one, one structure, principal structure per a lot. Now, we do, in fact, as we did just earlier this evening, allow multiple structures on a lot, and we do that when there is a development, basically turning something into a mini-development of, of a large lot with, and not with having to pave a undeveloped road. I just don't see, I don't see that there is any special condition of this property other than the owner wishes to stick another house in, in the back of it. And whatever benefit the, the owner is looking for, you know, additional income perhaps, can be achieved by other methods, and we have suggested several. And this is something that we do frequently on this board. Again, we are all laypeople, we are not lawyers, but reading the decision from the housing board, and this is the first one of these I've seen, I get the impression, reading this, that they didn't really pay a lot of attention to, to what was said, but I wasn't there, so I don't know. There's not much in there. I don't think this is, I don't think this is the intent or spirit of the ordinance to allow people to, to have multiple structures. We do tend to disallow, we disallow ADUs that aren't attached, and just building additional houses on, on a single lot is not something we typically do. I do think that it will adversely affect the property values of surrounding parcels. I understand that loss of privacy, people are allowed to cut down trees and build on their own property, and, and what happens with adjoining properties there doesn't necessarily matter, but that assumes that what's being asked for is otherwise within the bounds of what the city ordinances allow, or what the ZBA thinks is reasonable. This application has come before the board multiple times in very, in different vices. The board has consistently denied it. There, you know, this, the surrounding parcels, it will absolutely affect the value of parcels, you know, ignoring the privacy aspect, just basically extending that neighborhood with additional traffic, and, and this, this other house with a, a sec, another driveway built in, and somebody's got to pay for building that street up to, to city code, and I don't know what the fire department has to say, but that's, that's not our issue. I don't think it's in the public interest to have this part of the city basically, I don't know, cut up more, maybe I'm not putting that properly. The, the thing about substantial justice, it's hard, really hard to say. You know, substantial justice to the, to the property owner says, yes, I want to build a second, second house there, therefore that's my substantial justice. But I think it's a injustice to the surrounding neighborhood to have the nature of their neighborhood change so drastically. So, I'm inclined to vote no on this.
Mr. Sylvia.
I have some comments. In regard to the comparison to the case earlier, I think the special condition there was wetlands. I don't see any special conditions here, but I, I do believe a hardship could be found if the data relating to it could be presented, but I didn't really hear a lot of data explaining why there is a hardship here, or why there's not. It's just that I don't see any hardship. So, again, I'll just reiterate what I said before. If the applicant liked to table and come back with more data about what they said about "better," quote unquote, and how this is the only method that they can achieve to get substantial justice for this property, and show there's a hardship here, this is the only option, I'm fine with that, but otherwise, right now, there's, I don't see a hardship. And likewise, if the butters want to show that there's never going to be a hardship, I'm, I'm fine with that too, if they, if this was tabled, but if this is going on tonight, if I was voting, I'd vote no.
Any other comments? Somebody like to make a motion? Mr. Neely, you did this so well.
I can't do it this time.
Yeah. I'd like to make a motion to deny the variance application for Sam Cat's owner, 36 Granite Street, Sheet 44, Lot 37. Requesting variance from land use code Section 190-17, subsection Bs in Bravo, to allow two principal structures on one lot where only one is permitted. This is in the RB zone in Ward 3, and this was remanded back to us from the Housing Appeals Board. We did have some conflicting information tonight, whether we should do this as a full hearing versus just going point by point from the Housing Appeals Board. We did operate this as a full hearing tonight at the suggestion of the City Council. That being said, when we look at the five criteria, under the first criteria, that the variance is needed to enable the applicant's proposed use of the property, given the special conditions of the property and the benefits sought by the applicant cannot be achieved by some other method reasonably feasible for the applicant to pursue other than the variance. After extensive conversation, we have decided that there really is no special conditions to the property. The property is consistent with the rest of the block. We did note that most of the properties on this specific area of Summer, Concord Street, Leighton, and Granite, all are oversized lots, all appear to have just one primary residence with maybe an outbuilding such as a barn, and to put a second principal structure would change the character of this neighborhood specifically, as noted by many of the neighbors. We do believe that there, there are other means to pursue the applicant's desire to add in additional housing. There are some other residences in, on Granite Street specifically that give a model of how the applicant could move forward to reasonably pursue that ability to get to their, their end means by use of the actual ordinances. So, variance number one, we do feel that that failed the, the application criteria. Number two is within the spirit and intent of the ordinance. The ordinance is clear that there's only to be one principal structure on the lot. That is consistent with what is happening in this neighborhood. We are not seeing any other examples of additional primary residences breaking up this, any of these properties, so therefore we think the spirit and intent of the ordinance is clear, and that this application is in violation of that. The third criteria is that this will not adversely affect the property values of surrounding parcels. This does pass the criteria for number three. We did have a documentation from a licensed real estate agent saying that the property values would not be affected, in fact, noted they'd go a little bit higher. So, this does pass the criteria, number three. Number four for criteria, not, not contrary to public interest. Over the two times that we've heard this, we have had many members of the local neighborhood show up in opposition to this. We do, after extensive discussion, we have noted that we do think Davis Court would potentially change, although there is conflicting testimony on how much traffic would actually be affected on Davis Court, but we have heard from several members of Davis Court who have specifically testified against it, saying this would bring extra traffic. And the fifth criteria is substantial justice. When we talk about substantial justice, the applicant does think that the applicant would be getting substantial justice, however, based on the fact that we think that criteria one, two, and four failed, we do think substantial justice would be done to the neighborhood by denying this application. So, for those reasons, I make an application to deny the variance request.
Do I have a second? Mr. Patry, thank you for your second. Any discussion of motion? Falls in favor of the motion? Two, three, four, five. It's unanimous. I'm sorry, your application has been denied. I'm sure you are aware of your options for the future. Please contact the planning department if you have any questions. Moving on, case number five. Owner Tracy Harrison and Michael Gaudian. 287 East Dunstable Road, Sheet B, Lot 629. Requesting variance from land use code Section 190-17E1 for maximum driveway width, 24 feet permitted, 18 feet existing on Lisa Drive. An additional 18-foot wide driveway requested on East Dunstable Road for total width of 36 feet. This is in the R18 zone, Ward 8. The ZBA approved this back in, about two years ago, and that approval has expired very recently. And, so, we're just, we're here to hear it again. So, good evening, it is still evening. Please give your name and address for the record, and walk us through this.
Good evening.
And, and, Ms. Boras and Mr. Sylvia will be voting on this one.
Okay. Good evening, my name is Michael Gaudian, owner of 287 East Dunstable. As mentioned, our previous variance approved two years ago has lapsed. Simply due to time and money, we haven't been able to pursue the job, but we do believe we can do it within the next two years, so we're just here to extend the variance to pursue that work in the upcoming near future. Yes, sir.
Have there been any material changes since the last time this variance was approved?
In terms of the plan?
Yeah.
No. Some of the gaps necessarily that were brought up before were pertaining to line of sight north and south on East Dunstable. That will be able to be addressed through my neighbor's willingness to cut back all the shrubbery that he, he says has just been neglected over the years, and he wants to also move back so he can see south on East Dunstable. So, that being one issue that we feel like is addressed. And the second being, like most of the streets on East Dunstable, you know, is there going to be adequate space within the property to execute a turnaround, so you don't have to back out on D. Dunstable? And that is the plan, so just to make that more clearly stated here tonight, for any ambiguity in the plan previous, that's what we assured you last time verbally in these chambers, and just reiterating it here now.
Question for staff through chair. The $330 application fee and the $15 signage fee, is this a new $330 and $15, or is the same one from last time?
It's, it's the same fee from last time, but, you know, we had to, we had to charge it.
Okay, no, it's like, though, so is he now paid 600 and...
Yeah, he had, he had to...
That's what I thought, okay, thank you.
Because the city has expenses that it has.
That's, I, I think that's fair. If you don't do it in another two years, you'll have to pay it again.
Yeah, we're paying, we're paying the penalty, but, you know, we're first-time homebuyers, so...
Our, our staff's time's valuable, so we need you...
What's that?
Our staff, our staff's time's valuable.
No doubt, we were happy to pay the extension, happy to.
None of it goes to our staff either.
Yeah, I can attest to that.
Maybe it should.
It's a notification and advertising cost.
No, they've been super pleasant to work with, and in terms of, like, line of sight, they told us that the street department and the engineering team would be very helpful with us in helping to give guidance in terms of how much cutback would need to be done on those shrubs from my neighbor. So, and, and for the background, in case anyone hadn't necessarily read the, the background, our, our driveway deposits us from Lisa Drive to behind our house on the basement level in the back of a walkout, so you can't get to first floor grade without climbing the stairs. And so, for my, my parents, my father specifically, who can't ascend stairs, we'd like to expedite this, just to give him more comfort for holidays and things like that. Down the line, we'd love to see us back here again, so you can permit for a garage to be placed at the end of that driveway, you know, but not trying to put the cart before the horse.
Mr. Neely.
So, so I remember this case well, it was my first case when I first joined the board, so I voted against you, by the way. So, so don't, don't thank me yet, because you're not going to like what I have to say. So, so that being said, the first time the application came through, it was all about Uber drivers, deliveries, nobody can find my house, blah, 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 and oh, by the way, my dad can't get up the stairs. This one was all about, all about my dad can't get up the stairs, and that's it. I don't like that location, I'll be honest with you. I think, I think it's, it's a safety concern. So, give me a little more about what's, what's happening with your father. Is this not something we can figure out just by doing a walkway up there? You got, you have a large driveway in the back. No reason we couldn't do a, a walkway.
Well, I, 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 if you're suggesting that my motives are changed, and that there's some sort of deceptive action on my part, I, I find that a little offensive, but my father's deteriorating. Yeah, he doesn't ascend stairs. I'm not really sure, you know, what to say about that, but...
Well, let me ask, is, is it possible? Here's my concern. You, you've seen people flying up there. I saw somebody fly up there, rode like 50 miles an hour today.
Yeah.
I just happened to do a drive-by, this guy was, was flying from, you know, coming, coming, coming south, right? So, so he's the one that you, you, when you guys are backing out of that driveway, you're not going to see that guy flying up at 50. We're, we're at dark at, at 4 o'clock now, you, you know, you got a school zone.
Yeah.
I know last time I kind of said, hey, I'm worried about these, you know, this mom that's picking up the three kids, they're all screaming in the back of the minivan, she's getting distracted, and somebody's trying to go...
Yeah.
You, you just, it's a really bad spot, in my opinion.
Yeah.
Is there any way we could get it so that, and, and I get, I get your dad thing, I, that's, in no way am I trying to insult you. What I'm trying to think of, rather than a car getting hit, is there a way of, of taking this issue that we have and just kind of getting a walkway paved up the side, and...
Not that we see.
Okay.
And, you know, just to highlight the safety concerns, while it might be a subjective concern of yours regarding the safety, I think that the court enforcement on traffic right-ofways will be able to guide us to a safe conclusion on this. The line of sight criteria relative to the distance off the roadway and up the street north and south is pretty clear, so if I'm not eligible to provide a safe driveway, I won't be permitted to get one. And, as mentioned earlier, we do not anticipate backing out of this driveway with the feature of the turnaround, being able to have us, be able to pull up forward. Back to the line of sight, the line of sight is there to provide those traveling on the roadway ample distance for them to see me as much as for me to see them, and, yeah, anyone traversing my driveway is not someone I want to put at risk, and I, like you, want to provide a safe conclusion to this for the community. I maintained that sidewalk for, by Centennial Elementary. I shoveled the 200 feet of sidewalk, or, or, yeah, sidewalk for the teachers and students that use it, like, we plan to have kids walking to that school, like, we want it to be as safe as possible. I'm really grateful that my neighbor and I have a good relationship to open it up as much as is necessary. much as is necessary. And so that's what we want to do, you know, in as safe as possible. I hope that addressed your question?
Yeah, I'm good. Thank you.
Okay, all right.
Okay. Were you done walking us through this? I mean, I know this is, we're doing what we did before, but did you have anything further to add, or then we can just go to questions from?
I just thought, I don't think it has a material impact on the neighborhood or values or such. I mean, there's ample examples of properties within, you know, a quarter-mile radius, there's probably half a dozen situations analogous to this. So I think I would close. I'm complete.
Okay. Any other questions from the board? Not seeing any? Okay, have a seat. Is there anybody in the audience who wishes to speak in favor of this application?
We were just here for moral support. You can wait three hours.
Yeah.
We didn't want to leave so close.
Okay.
What character for a guy with a 100-year-old family history?
Is there anybody in the audience with questions, concerns, or opposition to this application? Seeing none, I will close the public hearing and open the public meeting. And again, Ms. Boras and Mr. Sylvia will be voting. Mr. Sylvia, your comments.
A question for chair. A question for the staff through chair. Would it be appropriate for a condition here to make sure all the shrubs and everything that gets in the way of the line of sight is removed as part of the variance? As, it sounds like the applicant is okay with that, but is that something we can, we can enforce?
It's reasonable. I mean, he said.
Yeah, the owner said he would, he would work with his neighbor to do that, so I think it's reasonable.
Well, there are, there are ordinances about line of sight.
Yeah, they're generally at intersections, though. There's usually a line of sight for at an intersection that has to be cleared, but since this isn't really at an intersection, it's an intersection with a driveway, it's still reasonable to say that, you know, any brush that's overgrown be trimmed back. But, you know, it grows. It's, you know, a year from now or so, it's going to grow even, even more, so.
So continually kept up?
It's to his benefit and to his neighbor's benefit to keep it pruned and trimmed. Otherwise, people aren't going to see folks walking on the sidewalk or pulling out of the driveway or pulling into the driveway, so it's, you know, to their benefit.
Okay.
Do I have audited?
Not, not at this point. Sorry. Yeah, my, my apologies, so.
But, yeah, to Mr. Neely's point, I don't think this is an optimal spot, but I do think this is doable. I think with that condition, this could, this could be done, so I will support this with that condition.
You would want to add a condition to the, to the decision? That would say what?
That the, anything obstructing line of sight from the driveway is removed and maintained. Would that be appropriate wording?
Just to keep overgrown landscaping to not block anybody's vision pulling in and out of the driveway.
Okay. That, that's fine. That, that'll work.
That's, I mean, that's what anybody wants in their house, really, so.
Would such a condition be acceptable to you, sir?
Absolutely. And it's my understanding, I won't even get approved unless it is cut back. But to your point about year-over-year maintenance, absolutely. We want that for ourselves. I do see that as a challenge, because I think there's probably grandfathered in driveways that have existing overgrown now, and basically completely unsafe all over.
Oh, yeah. There's a lot.
Yeah.
But, yeah, we, that's our intention for sure.
Okay, so wording that I've just come up with is maintain landscaping such that lines of sight are preserved.
That works for me.
Does that work?
Yeah. This is in a slam dunk like that one earlier in the meeting, but this can be done with that condition, I believe. I'm sorry, didn't hear that first. Oh, just, just comparing the, the case we had earlier in the hearing about the driveway there. I, I think this one is, Mr. Neely had some good points, but I think with this condition, we can make this work.
Okay. Let's see, okay, that was Mr. Sylvia. Let's see, Ms. Boras.
I'm in agreeance with that condition.
And, and the case in general?
Yes, I'm in favor.
Mr. Patry?
Ditto. Nothing to add, so.
I've said it all.
He's getting late. Mr. Boucher?
I'm in support of the application. The stipulation, I'm okay with that, but obviously it can only be for the property that he owns. He can't control what goes on in his neighbor's house. I will note, though, that, again, I live right on the side of the highway, but I use that Spitbrook Road a lot. There are worse blind driveways on Spitbrook Road, especially when you're coming back down, that, again, I know it's not ideal on that road, and you're right, it's, it's a, it's a racetrack sometimes. But, but again, I don't think, I'm going to deny it because of that. That's really an enforcement issue, that's, that's there, but I don't think that the proposal that he has is out of character or anything with, with what's going on in that road. So I'm in full support of the application.
Mr. Neely.
Then there was one. So, so, Mr. Far. I think, I think it's going to be hard because of the, it's the neighbor shrubbery. Do we have the ability? Honestly, i- if they were pulling straight out of the driveway every time, I'd lose all my heartache. Is there a way to mandate a turnaround?
We can't mandate something like that.
Okay.
Or mandate that he makes his neighbor.
Right.
Trim.
Right.
Hedges and landscaping. It's not his property, and his neighbor's not here to support it, so.
So, so, you know, you've heard my concerns. It's a safety issue. You know, the applicant is, is doing everything he can do. Sounds like the, the will of the board is to, is to approve this and push it through. So I, I don't love it, but I'm not going to stand in the way of it.
You, you are allowed to?
No, I, I get it, but the applicant is working hard for this.
Mr. Boucher.
I, I, I don't disagree with you. The way I also look at it this was, is this applicant could have decided to practically remove the driveway on Lisa, and say, I want my driveway off of, 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 on East Dunstable. You follow what I'm saying?
Yeah.
So it would just automatically be there. So, again, I get what you're saying, and I, and I know, because I've done the swerve into the alley a few times, too, from a side street issue. You know, I mean, not from a driveway, but from side street. And some of the side streets are pretty, a couple of them are pretty blind, too. So, so I get it, but, but again, you know, again, that's what it is over there, so, yeah.
Yes, no, sorry, one more question. Did the, the condition that we just mentioned, did that mention shrubs? Because it may, if, if the neighbor doesn't support it, maybe we could just have it be straight right-ofway, clear right-ofway, and that there may be some alternative in the future, the neighbor doesn't want to help the applicant here?
Well, the wording I came up with is maintain landscaping, and landscaping would include shrubs and things, but there, it's, it's on the applicant's property. Again, we can't say anything to what the neighbor does.
Could, could we get rid of maintain landscaping, just maintain line of sight? Would that be appropriate?
If it's on a neighbor's property, we can't.
Would, would there be like alternatives to doing that if the neighbor didn't want to cooperate?
I, I, I think there's just so much we can do.
Okay. Just want to double check.
We have, what I was suggesting here says, this is what we would like to happen. And currently, the applicant is, and says that his neighbor is willing to cooperate. If something changes down the road, I don't know, but there's just a limit to what we can.
Okay, just want to double check.
And also, all of us probably have different ideas of how we trim landscaping and methods we do it, and, you know.
So the applicant has some wiggle room if, if the neighbor in the future doesn't want to cooperate?
All you can really say is just, you know, maintain the, the sightlines as best you can. We can't control what his neighbor does.
Okay.
And with him, he knows he'll maintain his property, and.
As long as.
Other than that, I mean, we can't, we're not going to have code enforcement, probably not going to have code enforcement go out there and make someone trim a shrub or something, unless it's a real public hazard.
Yeah.
There's too many other things that they're doing.
Okay.
Unfortunately, at this point in proceedings, the public input and your input is not available, but, so. Okay, so would somebody like to make a motion?
Did you say what your thought process was? Did I miss that?
I'm sorry?
Did you say your thought process was on this case?
Oh, my thought process? I did not. I'm in favor of reapproving this variance. I remember this case, and it, it was an interesting discussion. I remember your comments, Mr. Neely, which I took very seriously, but I think that what's being asked for is reasonable. I think that it can be done in a manner that's at least as safe as other driveways that are on that street or in that area, well familiar with the area. And as Mr. Boucher says, he could choose to discontinue the existing driveway on Lisa Drive and put in a new driveway on East Dunstable, and we would have nothing to say about it. So, no, I'm, I'm inclined to approve the variance. Okay. At this point, somebody try to make a motion? Oh, I'll do it, but.
Yeah.
I'd like to make a motion on behalf of owners Tracy Harrison and Michael Gaudian, address 287 East Dunstable Road. Sheet B, Lot 629, requesting variance from land use code section 190-17E1 for maximum driveway width, 24 feet permitted, 18 feet existing on Lisa Drive, an additional 18-foot driveway requested on East Dunstable Road for a total width of 36 feet. This is in the R18 zone, Ward Eight. This board approved this case, this application on November 9th, 2022. There are no differences in the application, although there's a couple of items saying about maintaining the line of sight. One of the, a special condition that we are attaching to this is to, that the applicant will maintain landscaping such that lines, lines of sight are preserved. The board believes that this variance is needed to enable the applicant's proposed use of the property, given the special conditions of the property, the difficulty of accessing part of the property from the existing driveway on Lisa Drive, and the benefits sought by the applicant cannot be achieved by some other method reasonably feasible for the applicant to pursue other than the variance. The board does think this is within spirit and intent of the ordinance, providing a safe access to the house. We do not believe and have no testimony that it will adversely affect the property values of surrounding parcels. The board does not have any evidence that it is contrary to public interest, and substantial justice would be served to the applicant. So I make a motion to approve this area variance with the special condition that I mentioned earlier. Do I have a second? All right, let's see. Ms. Boras, I saw your hand up, so we'll give you the second. All those in favor of this, raise your hand. One, two, three, four, five. Okay, that's unanimous. Congratulations, your variance has been approved again. You have two years. Now?
Don't do that, David.
Okay, thank you. All right. That concludes our regular business.
Y'all said.
All right, nice.
We have minutes from the October 22nd meeting, which I was not at. Does anybody see?
Motion, motion to approve?
I'm sorry?
Motion to approve the minutes?
Motion to approve the minutes, yes.
As presented.
As presented, no change. Nobody sees anything to change. Seconds, Mr. Neely. Okay, all those in favor?
Who's voting on this?
Okay, let's see, who's voting on this one? Good question.
We're all voting.
You, you three can vote. I don't care. Let's just go home.
I was making lists. Okay, so who voted this last one?
Oh, my God.
It was Boras and Sylvia, so we'll make this Patry and Sylvia.
Okay.
Okay, all those in favor? Okay, that's unanimous, minutes are.
Second, second minute.
Ms. Boras, second.
No, I think I did. Didn't I, didn't I second that?
Oh, you seconded, Mr. Neely.
You can all second it.
Sylvia on the.
Seconded and thirded.
Okay. And we have agenda for that. It's in here somewhere. Yeah, it's in here somewhere. I had it, I saw it. All right, we're in the, all right.
I can't find it anymore.
I don't see any, any.
It's in the night.
It was there, I saw it. Yeah, it was, it was here. There's no regional impact.
I didn't see any of them.
Has anybody seen any regional impact?
No.
Okay, fine, I don't, I don't either. We have nowhere.
The only other thing we have is the 2025 dates?
Yes.
Meeting dates?
Yes.
I don't know if that made it to this package, but we set that up before.
Yeah, it was here.
We got it.
Yeah, it's in there.
It's in the back page. Yeah. Okay. I mean, this is the second time it's, it's been here. Usually we do it twice. I mean, worst-case scenario, if any, if any meeting needs to change, we can always change it in the future. That's not, not a problem for our staff to do that. Sometimes some meeting comes up that we don't know about, some election or some other event, but any, any of these dates can be changed. Maybe the back. So I think there's only two, one, one Wednesday, November 12th, that's it. The rest are Tuesdays. Yeah. So, all good?
Okay. So, let's have a motion. Let's see, I think we're going to go on this one. Please do. Mr. Patry and Ms. Boras. We'll vote on this one. Okay, motion to approve these drafts.
Yes. Need a motion? Or a second?
I need a motion, yes.
Yes. I shall. So I'll make a motion to approve the 2025 meeting and deadline dates as drafted.
Okay. All right, do I have a second?
Second.
Mr. Patry seconded. Okay, all those in favor? Ms. Patry and Ms. Boras are voting on this one. That's unanimous? Okay, the meeting dates have been accepted. And for that, motion to adjourn. You're adjourned at 9:57.
Good job, Dean.